The following is a production of Keri TV, the town of Keri's government access channel.
Call to order the July 17th meeting of the Keri Town Council. At this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Bush for our ceremonial opening. Ms. Bush?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take just a moment to pause and recognize that the town of Keri lost a pillar of the art community this month. Mr. Carroll Ogle passed away recently. And for those of you who didn't know, Mr. Ogle, he and his wife Sheila have given so much to this town, from their very founding of the heart of Keri to their entire commitment to the downtown area. It's easily evident for those of you who might not recognize the name by looking at the Guess Ogle House or the reconstruction and revitalization of the Matthews House. And our thoughts and prayers at this time are with the Ogle family. And I thank the family for sharing Carroll with us and all of their talents with the town of Keri. He'll be missed by many.
Very good.
And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're at Agenda Item 1.3, the adoption of our agenda. Staff informed council that Item 5.1, the Economic Development Incentive Public Hearing, was mistakenly added to our agenda, and staff requests that that item be removed. So is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our next agenda item is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak, I would ask that you please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes for their comments, and you may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. There's a three-minute time limit, and I will enforce that very strictly to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the podium, and when the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the time expires, the yellow light will turn to a flashing red light, and at that time, I'll immediately interrupt you and ask you to conclude your comments. And I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our three-minute time limit. We also ask that groups have a spokesperson speak on behalf of their group to reduce repetitive comments. Thank everyone in the audience for respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seat, or anything else that might distract from this meeting. So at this time, I'm going to open up Public Speaks Out for anyone who wants to speak on an item that is not a public hearing, and I would invite the first speaker forward to approach the podium.
Good evening, council. It's always a little trepidous to be first, but someone has to be first, and tonight it's me. And my name is Cecilia Gabriel, and I live on Wake Robin Lane in the ETJ. Branton Drive is a concern of ours, and I'm here tonight to speak on the green level road widening. First, I want to thank each and every one of you for allowing all of us at White Oak Estates the opportunity to become properly informed about the proposed green level widening plan. All of us were unaware of the June vote, and we applaud each and every one of you for allowing us sufficient time for me to personally notify every affected resident that the April plans are up for vote and are on tonight's consent agenda. Now, this won't come as a surprise to people who don't follow your communications on a regular basis. We urge you to consider the following: In all of the years we have lived here, there's never been an accident at this intersection, and we hope you do everything you can to prevent one in the future, not only at our intersection, but for all of those U-turns we'll be forced to make with each and every trip into Keri. That includes school buses, emergency vehicles, trash trucks, and even teenagers going to work in school. We're all disappointed that the engineering department favors a future road for future development while isolating residents who have been here for decades. It would be only a matter of feet to move the beginning of the divided median west and begin the project to the west of Branton. It would be just as easy to take a less invasive approach and allow the road to remain open until we have the tens of thousands of cars that will cause the traffic problem. By putting a median with a left turn in and requiring us to turn west before we turn east is uncharacteristic of the council's typical actions. You always try to add entrances and exits for the subdivisions, not take them away, as you're doing in this particular case. And going forward, we urge you to avoid setting a precedent with this kind of action as you manage future rural roads. And lastly, please remember that this entire problem, which we are facing the burden of bearing, started with an engineering problem, the town's illegal placement of Highfield and Glenmore roads. Branton Road has been here for decades, long before Glenmore. Without the engineering mistake of placing Glenmore too close to Branton, Branton would subsequently qualify for the median break, and we would not have this very problem that we are here today. We will be thinking about this problem, this mistake, each and every time we make a U-turn, every day. We strongly believe that you could be less invasive until you really have enough traffic to warrant the median. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Lon Neiman, and I ride C-Trans. And related to what I talked about the last time about the overgrowth problem for pedestrians, I've been looking at the street plans for the Academy Street redo, and I would strongly suggest that the people actually doing that design work, one day when it's been raining for an hour or so, get their umbrellas, start across the street on the west side of Academy Street, walk down to the Keri Arts Center around the corner to the elementary school playground fence, turn around, come back on the east side of Academy Street, and then when they do do the design work, not repeat what they're going to have to deal with on both sides of Academy Street now when the trees sag under a rain load. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Gina Benoit, and I live at 300 Coogee Lane in Keri, zip code 27511. I'm a graduate of the Keri High School class of 1972. I'm also the spokesperson for the Citizens Group that supports saving the Maynard Road Water Tower, more affectionately recognized as the Keri High School Water Tower. Our group has an online membership of 705 individuals from all over the United States, Europe, Africa, and Austria, the vast majority of whom are current or former residents of Keri, North Carolina, and graduates of Keri High School, all of whom are united in saving this landmark, the water tower that oversees our alma mater, Keri High School. Tonight, it's my privilege to present you the petition to save the water tower with 1,869 electronic signatures from our online petition hosted by change.org, an online petition platform, plus over 200 separate signatures from a one-time petition signing event at Keri High School. For those who may question the validity of the petition, change.org is a certified corporation formed in 2007 in Delaware. The company provides a free petition tool for 65 million users and hosts sponsored campaigns for individuals and organizations including Amnesty International and the Humane Society. The system will not allow for duplicate signatures and works only if the user sets up an account on change.org. It will not work if signatures are forged or appear on any other site outside of change.org. Every signature resulted in our letter of petition to be sent to the town of Keri officials, and we tried to keep those contacts limited to paid staff who would keep you informed of the number of signatures gathered. It was not our intention to be disruptive to your daily activities, but it was our intention to get your attention and consider alternatives to tearing down this water tower. I believe that the information we requested from the town of Keri, our research on the return on investment, and the recommendations that you will hear tonight from your own staff and your commissioned report validates our instinctive initial responses that the tower is not only a vital part of our history and traditions, but a vital part of our infrastructure supporting the safety and security of the surrounding community. We ask that tonight when you vote, you vote to save the water tower. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Patty Clapper. I moved to Keri when I was three days old. Although I was technically not born here, I was raised here, consider this town to be my home and my memories. I have attended Keri Elementary, East Keri, and Keri High School. I graduated in 1991. I'm sure you've all read and dissected the report, so I'm not going to take up a lot of time restating what's in that report. I'm sure you've read about the economic value of the tank and the safety value of the tank's location in a heavy traffic area. When my parents moved here in January of 1973, my dad took a job at Winn-Dixie, which was then located in downtown Keri. That building, though it has since housed many other businesses, is now mostly vacant. In 1979, I started kindergarten at Keri Elementary, and in second grade, I was a mouse in a play called Peter Pan. That was in the media center of Keri Elementary, which is now the Keri Arts Center. And when I walked through the Arts Center, I can still close my eyes, I can smell, I can hear, I can be back in the media center being that little mouse in that play. I had my first job in 1987 at Tempo Fashions, which was in Maynard Plaza, which is now gone. Tempo Fashions is anyway. I hung out at Keri Village Mall, I ate pizza at Cousins Pizza, and spent a lot of quarters at Time Out, which was the arcade in the mall, as did many kids back in the eighties in Keri. The mall is now a much larger Keri Town Center. The arcade and sadly Cousins Pizza also is now long gone. I used to walk to the movie theater during the summer to see movies, and that building is now gone. It's now a newly built Harris Teeter. My parking space at Keri High is now covered with a building which is full of classrooms, and I can remember many football games sitting in the bleachers staring across at that tower when it said "Class of '91," and that signaled to me that I was about to begin a new chapter in my life. While we understand that progress must happen for a society to thrive, we ask for your consideration in not allowing the tank to be demolished and become another part of a memory that was once Keri, like all these other items I've just described to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, I'll close Public Speaks Out and move to the consent agenda items. We're at the consent agenda items, which is Item 4 on your agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, we're going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please note that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have Minutes, the June tax report, Green Level West Road Widening Project, Comprehensive Plan Amendment for High House Road, Amendment to Traffic Schedule 9, prohibited parking in certain hours, Addendum to the Memorandum of Understanding for Jordan Lake Partnership, Request to Extend Council's Previous Action to Table 13 RZ27, which is the Pritchett Track. And I would ask council if they would like anything pulled from the consent agenda for discussion. And if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. Same rules for public hearings apply, same rules for Public Speaks Out apply to public hearings, except speakers now have five minutes instead of three for their comments. We removed Item 5.1 from our agenda, so we'll move to Item 5.2, which is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Crosspoint Church, YMCA. We're going to hear a report from our staff. We're going to allow the applicant to explain this request. We're going to conduct a public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and council will not take action on this item this evening. Instead, we're going to refer it to our planning board. Ms. Chandler?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment request for about seven acres in northwest Keri for the Crosspoint Church property. Subject property is located on the south side of Carpenter Fire Station Road, about a third of a mile west of NC-55 Highway. Notification of this Plan Amendment request was sent to property shown in yellow on this map. This slide shows stream buffers within and around the property, and this slide shows a proposed greenway south of the site. Carpenter Fire Station Road and NC-55 Highway are both existing major thoroughfares, and there is a current Triangle Transit Route on NC-55. As per the Northwest Area Plan, the land use designation for the subject property is office and institutional for the majority of the property, and on the south side, some parks and open space. The applicant proposes to change the land use designation to commercial, and there's an error on this slide. The entire portion that's designated a site should be colored red, and applicant is asking for commercial for that entire piece. As we move through the Comprehensive Plan Amendment process, we'll be looking at the four review criteria shown on this slide. Following the public hearing tonight, council may forward this request to the Planning and Zoning Board. That concludes staff's presentation.
Very good. At this time, I'll invite the applicant forward to give an explanation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ed Tang with Withers and Ravenel. At this time, I'd like to maybe hold off on our applicant response as the companion rezoning case that follows that will probably better explain what we're asking for. So I'm going to send it back to Meredith.
Okay, very good. And staff has completed their report, so at this time, I'll open up the public hearing and invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak on this Comprehensive Plan Amendment? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I have a question.
Yes.
On Slide 16, Meredith, you said this, but I couldn't follow you. You said that the park that extends into parks and open space should also be red?
Yes.
So the whole parcel's being asked to be?
Yes, that is correct.
Changed to commercial and the CPA?
Yes.
I want to make sure I was right about that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this will be forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board for their consideration, and we're going to go ahead and move into 5.3, which is a related public hearing, and it's on the rezoning request for Crosspoint Church. We're going to hear again a report from our staff, and then allow the applicant to come back and make comments, and we'll conduct a public hearing, and this will also go to the Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Granite?
Thank you. As Ms. Chandler just presented, this property is located at 6911 Carpenter Fire Station Road. A zoomed-in aerial view of the property shows the existing Crosspoint Church and the vacant land that is part of the same parcel, only a portion of the parcel is proposed to be rezoned. Once again, there is a land use plan that is being considered for an amendment. The existing zoning is residential 40, and the applicant is proposing conditional use, general commercial zoning on the property. They submitted an application that included an exhibit that clearly denoted the area that was being proposed for the rezoning and showed how it related to the church property. The conditions proposed by the applicant would be that use on this commercial zoned parcel would be limited to indoor/outdoor recreation facilities, office and institutional uses allowed in the general commercial zoning district. So they do have a specific user in mind. They do, however, want to retain the opportunity to use this for a church office or church activities in the event that changes at some point in time in the future. There's also several traffic mitigations that were identified in the traffic study that was conducted, and those are detailed in your staff report. Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified, and it was within 800 feet of the entire parcel, not just the subject area, because it's all under the same ownership. There were no protest petitions submitted. Staff received two phone calls offering support for the request. And at this time, I'd like to call upon the applicant, and following the public hearing, I'm available for your questions.
Very good. We're inviting the applicant back, or the applicant to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Jonathan Boe. I'm the lead pastor of Crosspoint Church in northwest Keri. Thank you for the opportunity to address council this evening. Staff did an excellent job presenting both the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the proposed rezoning. What I'd like to do is to speak briefly about the vision behind our request. Several years ago, a few of our leadership team were boarding a plane to Haiti after the earthquake. We were standing together in the airport, looking around, and we noticed 14 different nonprofit or mission groups boarding the same plane. They were easy to spot because they were all wearing their uniquely branded T-shirts. And we were struck with the sense that none of these groups seemed to know one another. No one knew what the others were doing. Suddenly, it became very obvious that if we could figure out how to partner and work together, then we certainly could be more effective in Haiti, helping move that mission further and faster. When we arrived back home, that same mindset rang true in regards to impacting our community here in Keri and the Triangle. And eventually, through a strange winding road of events, that brought us into a conversation with the Triangle YMCA where we asked the question, what if we could do significantly more together as organizations to serve our surrounding community by working together than each of us could do individually? The YMCA was very interested in moving into northwest Keri, but was looking into a seven to 10-year timeframe to be able to get a facility in place. We, as Crosspoint, proposed to the YMCA that we have a very strategic and accessible location on a prime piece of property, and what if we, as the church, raised the funds, built the facility on the land, and leased it back to the YMCA to completely run and operate, and got them operational within the next two to two and a half years from now? Emphasizing to them that we don't want it to be a church version of a YMCA for the community, we simply want it to be an incredible community YMCA that serves everyone. One of the questions I often get from people around the community is why, is why would a church look to do something like this? I think every church should always ask the question, how can we best serve the specific community around us? And our desire is to serve the community really well. By doing this, we'll be able to help provide more than 200 new jobs in the northwest Keri community. It's rare that a church gets an opportunity to serve their community in that way. As a resident in northwest Keri myself, I drive by the Harris Teeter parking lot at the Keri Park Commons and see hundreds of teenagers walking and hanging around in the parking lot after school because there's no place else for them to go. As part of this YMCA design, we have 8,000 square feet of dedicated space for teenagers. I'm sure all of us here are aware of the rise in crime in high schools in northwest Keri that were posted on the front page of the Keri News a few months back. The vast majority of these crimes are incidents fueled by boredom, and we want to be a catalyst to help with that. I've been amazed to see all the tremendous work the YMCA does with mentoring students on an everyday basis. One can make the argument that the why is one of the reasons why parents are able to make year-round school work because of the great track out in after-school programs. We, as a church, realize that to bless the community, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We just want to help facilitate more of the great things that are already happening, and in doing so, serve the community well. Secondly, we just want to be really good stewards of the property and the facility. We have a large parking lot that primarily gets used one day a week when thousands of people are on our campus, but we have also children's environments that primarily get used one day a week. With this partnership, the property can be utilized fully seven days a week. We think that's a much better stewardship of the resources and property. We also want to be great stewards of the land. It's important for us to hold on to the heritage and the history of the farmland in northwest Keri, and we want to tell that story well, in how we reuse the dirt, how we reuse the wood on the property, and all the environmental choices that we make, and find ways to point back to the history that we all stand on that makes what we all enjoy in northwest Keri possible. And finally, our hope is that this meets a great need in northwest Keri, that through this partnership, we can do significantly more together, that there are fifth graders now who will be able to benefit from this project before they leave seventh grade, rather than them being in college and us missing a whole generation of young people and their families before the why could do this on their own in the next seven to 10 years. Furthermore, we believe that this tells a much better story of community organizations finding a way, working together, rather than solely being focused on their own mission. Obviously, I believe this proposed rezoning is an excellent use of the property for many of the reasons I've already stated, and if the rezoning is approved, we believe the use envisioned for the property will be a welcomed addition to the area, and so we ask you for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And this time, I'll open up the public hearing for this rezoning, and I would invite the first speaker forward.
Good evening again. My name is Ed Tang with Withers and Ravenel. I'm the civil engineer representing Crosspoint on this case, and I wanted to thank the staff on their behalf for working diligently with us the last several months to provide the necessary guidance to figure out how to prepare for this rather unique case of what Crosspoint is seeking for the zoning and CPA. And we believe that this is, as the pastor mentioned, a great way to supplement the ministry of Crosspoint Church with the YMCA as a joint use. The church also, as is mentioned in your staff reports, the church has been working diligently with the developers of the other surrounding tracks, the Waikina Track and the Phillips Track, in terms of our related traffic improvements. I wanted to just touch on that a little bit tonight so you're aware of some of those discussions that have gone on between the different parties, and we believe that what the church has offered in their off-site mitigations is their fair share of those improvements to the surrounding roadway network. And it's clear the church realizes, and the why realizes, that they will have an impact out in that part of town, and so they have come up with a plan that is presented in the staff report that outlines what Crosspoint is proposing to do. And as a resident in northwest Keri, I believe that this is a wonderful addition, if approved, for the reasons the pastor mentioned. It's something that's definitely needed out there as an amenity that's a little bit different than most, but I think the residents would support this, and certainly, as a resident, I do. And we respectfully request your consideration in this matter as it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this rezoning public hearing. Anyone else for this rezoning public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions. Ms. Robbins?
I don't have a question. I just want to say how exciting this is. We talk to citizens all the time about the value of giving back to our community and helping to build it, and I just look at this as the most innovative and exciting collaborative effort that we have seen. I mean, I just think it's very, very exciting, and I'm just so impressed. I met with the church several weeks ago to hear about it, and, you know, I left there just thinking that the members of this church just get it. I mean, they get the idea of giving back and ministering to our community in the most relevant way possible. So I'm very excited about this initiative, and we used to always throw around the word remarkable. We wanted our community to be remarkable, and I think this is a remarkable collaboration. I'm excited.
I agree with you. I'm excited, too. But I do have some questions. Since it is general commercial, I know the conditions are to get a YMCA on their behalf for working diligently with us the last several months to provide the necessary guidance to figure out how to prepare for this rather unique case of what Crosspoint is seeking for the zoning and CPA. And we believe that this is, as the pastor mentioned, a great way to supplement the ministry of Crosspoint Church with the YMCA as a joint use. The church also, as is mentioned in your staff reports, the church has been working diligently with the developers of the other surrounding tracks, the Wauquina Track and the Phillips Track, in terms of our related traffic improvements. I wanted to just touch on that a little bit tonight so you're aware of some of those discussions that have gone on between the different parties, and we believe that what the church has offered in their off-site mitigations is their fair share of those improvements to the surrounding roadway network. And it's clear the church realizes, and the why realizes, that they will have an impact out in that part of town, and so they have come up with a plan that is presented in the staff report that outlines what Crosspoint is proposing to do. And as a resident in Northwest Cary, I believe that this is a wonderful addition, if approved, for the reasons the pastor mentioned. It's something that's definitely needed out there as an amenity that's a little bit different than most, but I think the residents would support this, and certainly, as a resident, I do. And we respectfully request your consideration in this matter as it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this rezoning public hearing. Anyone else for this rezoning public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions. Ms. Robbins.
I don't have a question. I just want to say how exciting this is. We talk to citizens all the time about the value of giving back to our community and helping to build it, and I just look at this as the most innovative and exciting collaborative effort that we have seen. I mean, I just think it's very, very exciting, and I'm just so impressed. I met with the church several weeks ago to hear about it, and, you know, I left there just thinking that this, the members of this church just get it. I mean, they get the idea of giving back and ministering to our community in the most relevant way possible. So I'm very excited about this initiative, and we used to always throw around the word remarkable. We wanted our community to be remarkable, and I think this is a remarkable collaboration. I'm excited.
I agree with you. I'm excited, too. But I do have some questions. Since it is general commercial, I know the conditions are to get a YMCA there and save some space or opportunities for office. What is the worst-case scenario of what else can be built there?
It's prohibited for other uses. It would restrict it to those types of uses, so you couldn't see a restaurant, you couldn't see a gas station. It would limit those uses.
Okay, very good. Other questions?
And just a note, it would not exclusively allow a YMCA, which is why it's worded the way it is. There could be another organization that could come in with that type of use.
Okay. Other comments? All right. This will go to the Planning and Zoning Board, and we'll see it at another date. Thank you, Ms. Granton. We now move to our next public hearing. It's comprehensive plan amendment for Ridgefield Farms. We're going to hear a staff report. We're going to allow the applicant to talk about the request, and we'll conduct a public hearing. And once again, Ms. Chandler will introduce this item.
Thank you. Good evening again. This is a comprehensive plan amendment request for the Ridgefield Farms subdivision in Northwest Cary. The subject property is located along Ridgefield Drive between Green Level Church Road and NC 540. Notification of the plan amendment request was sent to property shown in yellow on this map. This slide shows stream buffers within and around the site. You can see there are several stream buffers going through the property. And you can also see on this slide that there is quite a network of greenways in this area. Both McCrimmon Parkway and Green Level Church Road are existing major thoroughfares. And a future C-Trans route is planned on Green Level Church Road, however, funding and timing is not known. As per the Northwest Area Plan, the land use designation for the property is medium-density residential, and it includes Note Six, which states Ridgefield Farms lots should only convert from very-low-density residential to medium-density residential uses when at least three or more adjacent lots are consolidated or assembled for that purpose. The applicant proposes to change the land use designation to low-density residential, and that note I just read would be altered to include conversion from very-low-density residential to low-density residential uses when at least three or more lots are consolidated. As we move through this process, we'll look at the criteria for consideration when reviewing a comprehensive plan amendment, and following the public hearing, council may forward this case to the Planning and Zoning Board. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. At this time, I'd invite the applicant down for comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Adam Ashbaugh. I'm with L-Star Management. I'm here as the applicant on behalf of the ten property owners that own thirteen properties within the Ridgefield Farms subdivision. This request is made in advance of a rezoning application that we're also working on that will come before you once the traffic impact analysis is completed. The proposed low-density is really a reaction to things that we've heard from Town Council, projects that we actually worked on across the street, the Braymore subdivision, the Wecroft folks that weighed in on that rezoning, and it's really the direction that we've heard from you and the surrounding property owners, the desire for a lower-density and higher-quality development. In addition to the compatibility with the surrounding development, quite frankly, this property is, the features on this property really warrant low-density between stream buffers, topography, environmental features. Low-density residential is really much more appropriate for this piece of property than medium-density residential. So we welcome going through the process, not only for the CPA but for the rezoning that will follow. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else from staff? Okay. Very good. This time, we'll open up the public hearing for this comprehensive plan amendment, and I would invite the first speaker forward.
Mayor and Town Council, I'm Robert Traywick, and I'd like to speak in favor of this proposal along with my wife, who couldn't make it this evening, and our neighbor Jim Chow, who's in the audience. We plan to stay here through the sale and development of this subdivision. I support the move to low-density residential because I personally interviewed about a dozen of the developers, and we found that L-Star had the best proposal. I came to this conclusion, and eventually, entire neighborhood came to this conclusion, and many of them are here because they believe that L-Star's proposal was the best. And as Mr. Ashbaugh said, the reason for this is that their proposal respects the topography and the natural beauty of the area. And I believe that low-density residential would allow a plan, we looked at all these site plans, and we believe that this plan, the low-density residential, will allow the plan, the site plan, to not run over all the stream buffers and retain a few natural areas. Maybe you found it interesting that the Cary News this week reported that Morrisville residents want more greenways. Well, as one who plans to stay in this area, I think this plan will appeal to future residents because they won't be saying, after they've moved in, where's my greenway? And as Adam mentioned, it will also appeal to the neighboring low-density residential areas of Wecroft and Braymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Betty Boda, and I, along with the rest of our neighbors from Ridgefield, support amending the plan to low-density residential. Some of us have been there for thirty years, and even though we won't live there anymore, we still care about what happens to our land. Amending the plan to low-density residential helps ensure that. In addition to what Robert said, we also chose L-Star based on their experience. They listened to what was important to us and to the future development of our land. They demonstrated a willingness to work with changes in the lots that were to be included in the group sale while respecting the needs of those not selling. Finally, we support L-Star in developing a community with a density consistent with Braymore and Wecroft, the other new developments in the immediate vicinity. This density is consistent with low-density residential.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? I'll close the public hearing, and I'd have to say that this is very refreshing.
I know.
We don't get any proposals like this. Yeah, this is going to be fun to watch go through, so I'm excited about this one, too. Other comments, Mr. Yohak?
I was talking to someone the other day about another rezoning and plan amendment. I said, yeah, I'm probably going to support it, but it doesn't make me happy. And the answer from him was, you mean you actually have rezonings that make you happy? And I said, yeah, and we've had, but this was not a rezoning, it's a plan amendment, but we've had two tonight that actually make me happy. So I'd like to keep the streak going tonight, if we can.
Any other comments?
No pressure.
Okay, we're going to forward this to our Planning and Zoning Board for their consideration and recommendation. And we'll move to our next public hearing, which is the Wauquina Road rezoning request. We're going to hear a staff report once again, allow the applicant to speak once again, and conduct the public hearing. And again, we will not act on this item tonight. We'll forward it to our Planning and Zoning Board, and Ms. Granton will introduce this item. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone approximately fifty-eight acres located at Wauquina Road and Indian Wells Road. Subject property is shown here, highlighted in yellow. It's an assemblage of several parcels. Zoomed-in photography shows it's a mix of single-family detached residential and some vacant parcels throughout that area. Cary's land use plan designation for the property is medium-density residential, and there's a small portion that is parks and open space, highlighted in green. And there's a note on Cary's land use plan, Note Number Nineteen, that discusses the types of uses allowed if there's a mix of different residential types, but no mix required in the event of single-family detached, which is what's being requested. The existing zoning is residential forty. The applicant has proposed two zoning districts, recreation resource for the area that is impacted by a stream buffer and would remain open space, and then residential eight conditional use for the developable portion of the property. The applicant's proposed a minimum density of three-point-one dwelling units per acre. Reminder that this area is in a medium-density predominantly. That zoning condition was submitted back in April, early April, and staff has heard there's been some concerns about the appropriateness of the minimum, so this is something we'll look at as it goes through the process and communicate your feedback back to the applicant as well. They proposed a condition that on the R-eight conditional use area, the use be limited to detached residential. There are several traffic mitigations that are identified in your staff report that address specific concerns that were part of the traffic study. As with the case you heard previously, not all of the mitigations were offered, and that's because there are three cases going forward at the same time. Each case is taking a piece of these suggestions and addressing it. So that's part of why all of these are being presented at the same public hearing. Property owners within eight hundred feet of the subject property were notified by mail of the proposal. There were no protest petitions. We did hear some phone calls from a couple of adjacent property owners who were not part of the assemblage, just questioning how in the future their property might be considered for rezoning, how this development might impact their ability to develop. And staff had some concerns about a future roadway, which I'll mention in a moment. The site is impacted, as I mentioned, by a stream buffer, and field determination of that will be required at the time of site plan. There's also a flood hazard area identified. Once again, the applicant is aware of that and conducting field determination. There's a future proposed street-side trail that would be adjacent to the future collector road through the subject property. And that future roadway is shown here on Cary's comprehensive transportation plan. This is identified in the staff report as a concern and an observation from staff that without the parcels in this area being part of a development, it raises the question of if and when that connection will be made. So one of our engineers has provided some additional detail and analysis of that and addressed that in your staff report. The closest transit route is along NC 55 for a fixed triangle transit route. At this time, I would like to call upon the applicant, and then, following the public hearing, I'm available for your questions.
Great. Would the applicant please come forward?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm JW Sharon with IDS. Over the last year and a half, I've had the fortunate experience working with the homeowners in this area along Wauquina Road. As many of you may imagine, it is quite a challenge when you're dealing with individual parcels and homes that have been there for up to some thirty to forty years. But any time that I'm working on projects, as of such, our goal is to try to assemble the most we can to bring forward. And I think with the fourteen parcels that we have, the fifty-nine acres, is quite a bit of land that you can see to help create the vision for this area. One of the main goals in trying to put this assemblies together, too, was trying to not have pieces dislocated or not contiguous so that you could create a nice subdivision in this area. As you're well aware, with L-Star there to the north with Indian Wells, they have brought forth a plan with you for this area, too. And Sedgfield, which is under construction, that you can see on the southeast of the site, they're under construction. Three different groups are in the neighborhood. I can tell you from the Wauquina, almost all of them have been contacted by us or by others who see interest. Some people just don't have an interest right now to move. There are other reasons behind it, and I don't say that you may not see other properties that may come forward in the future, too. But with our plan that we would bring forward, we would make sure that it would be developed in a way that those parcels could have been incorporated at the time that they come to you for consideration. But one of the main things I'd like to point out, which I found was amazing working with this neighborhood, in 2006, without developer input, they grouped together all of the residents on Indian Wells and Wauquina and came forward to you and asked for a CPA to go to MDR. So the neighborhood itself, before any one of us got in there and had a vision, they knew something was going to come, and they prepared for it. So they've all said, at that point in time, we know something's going to happen. So I'm bringing you fifty-nine acres of this request tonight, and about twenty-five percent of that with a resource recreation designation that will allow, too, for those areas to be saved. In addition, that this neighborhood in the future would have access to the greenway to the west that was pointed out. It would allow good access to north up towards the future YMCA if it's built. Also, too, as it relates to traffic, we have been working with YMCA, and we've been working with the Phillips Track. It's been a coordinated effort with multiple meetings at the suggestion of staff, and we did reach agreement based upon impacts of each community that we felt were reasonable, and all have agreed upon that and submitted that back to the town staff. I think it would be most important for you all, and it would be part of any reasonable discussion, to understand, too, that having the secondary point of access there through Sedgfield is important, and no one would expect anything to happen before that is open to the public there. We are, the comment came up, about three-point-one units per acre. While it is R-eight, and we're trying to meet the median density of three to eight, sometimes it's just trying to put larger lots and trying to meet your minimum density thresholds is tough. And that sounds strange, but we were having a hard time trying to get three-point-one units in there, but we wanted to meet your plan. So that's why we put in the minimum three-point-one. You know, we're not going to be anywhere near the middle or upper end of the scale in the future when we come in with the subdivision plan if this is approved. Tonight, too, there are a number of residents here. If you don't mind, I'd like to ask them to stand for a minute just to see who they are. They're here for support. Thank you. I may have a couple come down to just talk about their vision and what they had hopes for in this area when times change, but I would say that I think that we have put together the most contiguous, largest area that we could if this area was ever redeveloped, and we believe this does meet your land use envision for this area, and we'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll open up the public hearing, and I would invite the first speaker forward.
Hello, council, mayor. My name is Mike Somerville, and I live at 1404 Wauquina Road in Cary in this affected area. This is going to be really short. I'm not here to protest it in any way. I wouldn't do that to my neighbors. They were all there long before I was. The one thing I'll ask the council to please take in consideration, right? There's multiple lots in that brown area that aren't being part of this rezoning, right? And I happen to be one of them. And I just think that if we're going to go in and look at a plan, then the plan should not isolate people that want to be part of that, right? So now, I wasn't, unfortunately, I missed getting in that. I wasn't contacted, right? I had to reach out, I will say that, but JW was respectful, and they did get back to me. But the only thing I'm asking is take into consideration, please, that all of it, you know, be kept in the same density, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor and council, I hope I don't blind you here. My name is Steve Reese. My wife and Pam and I have lived at 1721 Wauquina Road for the past twenty-seven years. In August, it'll be twenty-eight years. We moved from a very small town in Virginia called Hillsville. Some of you may have heard of that. But when we were looking for land in this area, we spotted where we live now, and it just looked like Hillsville. We're on a little over three acres. We've grown or raised two children on it. We've got four grandchildren now, and... And speaking of opportunities for growth, this would be a great opportunity to fill the why, if it does come, I hope it does. There needs to be something like that in that area. There isn't anything now. And I am totally behind the rezoning. Ever since I've lived here, I've heard nothing but, you know, hold back the people, hold back the traffic, and all that kind of stuff. It's ready to move. And it's an opportunity for the town to create some additional revenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Don Skinner. I live at 1705 Waukena Road, my wife and I, and we've been there for 36 years. And we moved from the little area of Upchurch, which none of this was Carey at that time. But, you know, we've seen the growth in the area, expected to see this coming sooner or later, and we appreciate the work that JW has done and met with us. And I'd like to see this move on, so we can move on with our lives. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next speaker. Anyone else for this public hearing? If you say no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions and problems.
I have a quick question. So we have expressed in the past a concern about having minimum densities, and then we often have a preference for having a maximum density. But in this case, with the applicant coming forward with an R8 conditional use, clarify that for me. Does that mean that they cannot have a lot that is smaller than 8,000 square feet?
That is correct.
So then we shouldn't...
8,000 is the minimum lot size, correct?
Okay, so we should not have to worry too much about having too many, a maximum density, because the density is kept by that 8,000 square foot lot?
That's correct. The maximum wasn't really the concern. It was whether or not it was consistent with the land use plan, which is where the minimum came from, which we have implemented before in the past. There's just been questions about whether or not that's necessary or appropriate, what other factors can be taken into consideration, such as area that's not buildable because of stream buffers or trying to protect champion trees. So we're looking at this.
Okay, I'm glad to hear you say that, because I'm a little confused by it when, so maybe you can help me understand this. When the applicant said, the applicant's representative said that they've had trouble getting the density to meet medium density.
Right.
They decided to put this 3.1 minimum requirement on there. If they put this requirement in there, does that mean that then they are allowed to eat into buffers, like because they, or...
No, that's where the challenge comes in. That's why we're looking at it.
They would not get any kind of waivers or anything like that to other elements of our ordinances because they have this condition in there?
That's where we've realized it can be problematic. So that's why we're looking at it.
So you're going to help us figure that out before it goes to planning and zoning?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Ms. French.
Yeah, I just, can you help me better understand the resource recreational and the R8?
It's open space. It could be, if it's in some sort of a stream buffer that can't be built upon, it's going to stay open space with no disturbances. If it's not subject to buffer requirements, that might be able to have some sort of a greenway trail, or it might be able to have recreation, but it's not going to have any houses.
You see a lot of rezonings where there are stream buffers and such on the site, but that's not rezoned RR. And I'm seeing, you know, on this one, they're proposing to rezone the stream buffer RR. How does that impact the density calculations for the remaining parcel?
It helped them achieve that density that they were looking for. If they looked at the overall area, the gross area, then their density was going to end up being much lower if they looked at the gross area, taking that all into consideration.
So they take it out?
They've taken it out.
By taking it out, that means that they would get fewer units, which means that they stay within medium density rather than going into a low-density category?
They concentrate their density in that actual buildable area, so they're moving closer to that medium density. So they're clustering, in a sense.
Yeah. But I mean, that actually achieves something that we like.
Well, yes, but, but we don't necessarily like, well...
The loophole.
Well, 8,000 square foot lots. I mean, that's...
Well, that's, I mean, that is the question. Is 8,000 square foot lots the right density? Their next category is R12, right? R12 conditional use.
You know, to me, it seems like there's been a lot of effort to meet that minimum of 3.1, whereas if, you know, kind of come in with a request, you know, low-density residential for the plan and come in with 2.5 per acre.
That's what I'm thinking.
I mean, it just seems like we're doing some real funny things to make the numbers work, and when, at the end of the day, we would just like to see quality, single-family home development on probably lots larger than 8,000 square feet. So it just, it seemed, it's caught me odd. I mean, we see a lot of these, and we don't see the stream buffer rezoned RR. On this one, it was, and so just wanted to ask why. I'd be curious.
So are they trying to fit into the medium density to avoid having to do a land use plan amendment? Is that the desire? That they're, I mean, they're so, it sounds like with 8,000 square foot lots, they are just able to achieve medium density. So if they went, they can't go to R12, because then they would not meet medium density?
Right, right. It would not be consistent with the plan. And there is, I mean, there's a range of product types. There's approximately, the PDD areas over here are closer to an R12, but the lots are in the 7,000 to 9,000 range with the adjacent PDD. So they're sort of in the middle. They're making a transition between the, with the surrounding uses. Now, the R40, that's not part of the assemblage, obviously, is, it's not a close match to that, but those properties are part of the medium-density land use plan as well. The entire Waukena Road and Indian Wells neighborhood was all part of that 2006 plan to go to medium-density residential. What probably wasn't taken into consideration was some of the topography and the stream buffer issues.
Okay. Can you point out, is it two lots that are RR? Is it the bottom left corner?
It's the green, the green area, following where the stream buffer is.
Oh, so it's part, it's part of lots? It's not actually...
Well, and these lots won't stay as they are. This is the current existing property lines with a future development. Those lot lines would all be subdivided, you know, this is, this is the individual property owners as they exist today. So yes, it is part of, part of the existing lots, but that's not the proposed subdivision plan.
Oh, okay. Is anybody else slightly confused?
Yes.
Okay, so let me see if I can articulate what I think is going on, and you can correct me when I make a mistake. So it looks to me like we have three things going on here. Either we could, this could go forward as being proposed, where they have taken out their open space to enable them to achieve 8,000 square foot lots and stay within medium-density category. Or they could have, the second option is they could have kept all that green space in there, but when they did 8,000 square foot lots and counted their gross density with that open space, then they would have fallen down below into a low-density category. So then they would have had to do a land use plan amendment to achieve that. It'd probably still end up with the same number of lots, but they'd have to add another layer of change or of entitlement. Is that right so far?
I think so.
Okay. And so then the third thing is, either 8,000 square foot lots doesn't feel right to the council, and there'd be consternation, and then they'd go through the process and maybe be turned down and have to come back with a land use plan amendment and a different type of zoning that would provide larger lots, if that's what the concern is among council members? For me, it's just confusing, because this is the first time I've ever seen stream buffers basically removed from the equation.
We have seen RR zoning come into play in other zoning cases before. It's a way to lock in and guarantee there's not going to be any building in that area. So that has happened occasionally. We can...
Since I've been on council, three years, I haven't ever seen this before. Yeah, so if, let's say, they did not have that minimum 3.1 requirement in there. They go to lay out the subdivision plan, and they find that they dip below the medium density densities, and they now are in the low density, would they be forced to come back in with a land use plan amendment, or would their development just be...
We are in the process of looking at an ordinance amendment that would enable council to find that it's not consistent with the land use plan and determine whether or not that's something they want to take action on.
Okay.
So that's something that is being discussed.
Okay. And that wouldn't be costly to an applicant or time-consuming to an applicant to have to go through that?
Well, that's, we'll have to evaluate that. Ordinance amendments can take a while, so, what, go ahead.
And it's your point, Deborah, that if that ordinance amendment comes to pass and council can take action or not take action on someone not in compliance with the land use plan, that we could choose not to take action because it actually meets our needs to have this lower density than the land use plan says?
That's what we're looking at with the ordinance amendment.
Because that's what my sense from the applicant was, they're not so worried about it being three or more. They think we are.
Right.
And if it's 2.8, they're out of compliance, but we'd be happy.
Right.
Because it looks like that's what, I mean, your gut's saying, that's a good thing. But you're trying to do funny math to make the numbers turn out.
Well, and what happens when site plan, I mean, do we know these stream buffers absolutely exist? What if we, you know, we mark that as RR, and these stream buffers, once they get on site, aren't there?
Well, you still can't build on them, because it's, you can use it for recreation.
I just want to make sure that, you know, they don't come back with another land use amendment. I want it not RR, but R8, and build a house, which was going to be in a stream buffer. Now, do we have the ability to say that we're not accepting a condition, but we'd accept the rest? We don't do that very often. I can't even remember doing that. So we do have the ability to say, we'll accept this rezoning request, but not...
There are, occasionally, there are conditions that council does not have to accept if they don't feel that they're appropriate or enforceable.
Okay.
That's correct. Conditions have to be mutually acceptable.
And would that be done, most appropriately done now, done at PNC, done when it comes back? What's the process, I mean, what, when would be the right time to say that we don't want that condition, from the applicant's point of view as well as ours? I hate to see people deal with something they don't have.
I think giving an idea tonight would be a good idea, so the applicant could work a way to address that.
Okay.
So let's see Mr. Sharon coming back.
Everything you said is correct. We are definitely trying to meet the plan. And the reason why we would not have come back to go down to LDR is because the residents just took it up in 2006 to MDR. And the fact that L-Star went to the north and did R8, they're doing the same type of development that we're asking to do. We're trying to be consistent, so that overall in that area, if you've already got eight started, we'd be into eight plus, and hopefully the other lots, as one gentleman said, would be A-plus. How we get there, we were kind of following a staff suggestion to make that happen without a lot of complication, because it would be seen confusing. You went LDR to MDR, now back to LDR. So that's why we put that condition in. However, we are not opposed if you don't want the 3.1. You know, we're going to do everything we can to give you a quality subdivision, you know, with lots that everybody else is doing in this general area.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I think we have a pretty clear agreement here that we don't love the condition about the minimum 3.1.
We've stated that before.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I think this is pretty consistent across the board. Other questions?
So are we formally saying to the applicant, we'd like him to, we will not accept that condition? Is that the proper terminology at this point? Because I don't see us...
Well, we're not taking a vote, but we seem to be, by consensus, giving direction.
I haven't heard Mr. Smith speak on it, but it seems like everybody else would be okay with that. I just want us to be clear at the applicant, that's all. I feel like that's the fair thing to do.
No, the enthusiasm of all views speaks volumes. Nothing better.
Whoa.
My only other comment would be the two properties to the south of Waukena Road. There does seem to be a disconnect there, but I understand if the other property owners aren't willing to sell, they're not willing to sell, so I just would like to see a little more holistic, comprehensive for the area, but it is what it is.
Well, you know, I'm trying to figure, because staff would work at the subdivision level with the applicant to make sure that it would tie in for future development. You all would look at it with that vision and say, at some point, these other properties would likely come in, and we don't really have to worry about that at this juncture, do we?
That's where the connectivity requirements come into play, making sure that you don't land-lock a parcel, or that you don't prohibit somebody from being able to develop in the future.
Okay. Is there any reason that a nearby resident should feel concerned about that? Is there anything that they should be aware of?
It's just a question, I think, of whether or not there's private negotiations going on between applicants and property owners as to whether or not they're part of this assemblage. I really can't speak to what's been said to whom, whether or not they've been approached, or how. Ideally, a more comprehensive assemblage gives them a little bit better reassurance that they're going to be part of a future development. But if they're not ready to sell their property at this point in time, that's why we have the ordinance, the connectivity to the north, south, east, and west, when you've got undeveloped or underdeveloped property, so that if and when they do decide, they can be part of it.
Anything else? All right. We'll forward this to the planning and zoning board for their comments, consideration, and recommendation. That moves us to public hearing 5.6, the 215 South Academy Street rezoning request. We're going to hear a staff report. The applicant will come forward and explain the request, and we'll conduct a public hearing. The council will not act on this item this evening, and we're going to refer to our planning and zoning board. Ms. Bierman will introduce the site.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing on a request to rezone about .57 acres at 215 South Academy Street. This is a vicinity map. Here you can see South Academy Street and West Park Street, or East Park Street. This is a closer view of the property. There is residents on the property. This is the Guesswhite Ogilhous. It is a historic residence and a landmark structure. The existing zoning on this property is general commercial conditional use. The property was rezoned to, well, was zoned to a B1 conditional use district in 1987. This was for the, at that time, there was an intended use as a restaurant. There were a number of conditions that were put on the zoning at that time that supported the intended use at that point in time for restaurant use. However, that use did not, was not developed, and the Ogles bought the property and restored the house to be used as a residence. The proposed zoning district is HMXD, High Intensity Mixed Use, which is a sub-district of the Town Center District. So when, with this rezoning request, this would make this consistent with the other districts in the surrounding area, consistent with the plan designation as shown from the Town Center Area Plan, and would remove the zoning conditions that were put on in the past related to a previous intent. This shows the Town Center Area Plan. You can see, in this case, HMXD is the plan designation, so this brings everything consistent with the plan. The property is in the downtown historic district boundary. This is shown in pink. There are no stream buffers or floodplains shown on the site, according to Carey's GIS maps. There is a proposed street-side trail along South Academy Street at this location. This shows the transportation plan. This is designated as an A-type street in the Downtown Streetscape Project. The design of the actual street and the streetscape would be according to the Streetscape Project, and at the time of the site plan or subdivision approval, if the property is redeveloped in any way, then right-of-way would be dedicated, but the actual improvement of the Streetscape would not be required. There is a C-Trans fixed route and also a triangle transit route that runs along Academy Street. This is a notification map that shows the properties within 800 feet notified of the rezoning request. There was one protest petition received. However, it was not valid because it was not properly signed, the proper person... properly signed, the proper persons did not sign for the corporation that owned the property. In terms of citizen feedback, as I stated, we did receive the one protest petition, and the, in, the concern expressed in that regarded just questions about information related to the adjacent private street. That concludes the staff's presentation. At this time, I would call on the applicant.
Okay, this time I would invite the applicant forward. Ms. Ogul, thank you for being here, and please know that our thoughts and prayers are still with you.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Sheila Ogul. I live at 215 South Academy Street in downtown Cary. You've heard Mary Beerman's report and her request, and I'm just here merely to ask you to consider that request so that our property can be rezoned to be consistent with the rest of the property in downtown Cary in the historic district. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. This time I'll open up the public hearing for this rezoning request and would invite the first speaker forward. Anyone at all? I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions and comments.
Wasn't this entire area rezoned back with TCAP? Or was that the overlay that was created? Refresh my memory on that. I'm just trying to figure out how this one parcel stayed general commercial and everything else is HMXD.
That was, as I've explained, where there had been a previous zoning case back in 1987 that had zoning conditions with it. When, that was also the case with this, another property here that's on West Park Street. So when the TCAP was put into place, all of the parcels that didn't have zoning conditions associated with them were assigned the sub-district that matched with the TCAP plan designation. There were a handful of parcels, these two were included, the Jones House was included at that time as well. That one has since been rezoned, and so this, this request is for making that same change on this property.
Okay. Very good.
This rezoning would allow the applicant the ability to construct a couple, few townhomes behind the existing home, is that correct?
There was an ordinance amendment that was done last year that added to the HMXD sub-district the ability to have additional single-family uses on the lots with approval of a special use permit in, in certain conditions. So it would open up the possibility to construct additional detached residential units on there.
Okay, and if the property owner wanted to do that, if the rezoning goes through and say passes ultimately, would we, would the council see that at all, or would
Yes, you would, it would be a special use permit. So you would, you would have to approve that as a special use permit.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Yerha.
Yeah, well, my happy streak sort of ended with the Wakina Road rezoning that turned into confusion rather than, than happiness. But thi, this one is, you know, I've expressed before, I'm not necessarily thrilled with this, but the good part about this, even though the conditions go away with that, as long as the house remains a landmark, it's a landmark status, it is protected. Doesn't matter what zoning district it is, if I'm not mistaken, Mary, is that, that correct?
That's correct, as long, as long as the landmark district remains. There's not, the, any, the zoning district of any sort doesn't guarantee that the landmark district remains, but it has no effect.
It's a separate issue, but it's not being affected by this. I mean, it's landmark and it remains a landmark even with this rezoning. So as long as that remains, I mean, I, I think I'm, I'm okay as, as far as, as far as that's concerned.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you. We'll refer this to our planning and zoning board for their consideration and recommendation. We'll now move to items 5.7 and 5.8, it's Betty and True Love Honor Initiated Annexation Petition and the Wheeler Woods Subdivision Rezoning Request. The public hearing was continued from our June 26 council meeting. We're going to hear a staff report, we're going to allow the applicant to explain the request, we'll conduct a public hearing, and we will not act on these items this evening. Instead, we're going to refer to the planning and zoning board, and once again, Ms. Beerman will introduce the
This public hearing is a request to rezone about 6.81 acres on True Love Drive, and as you mentioned, this is a second public hearing, the first was on June 26. There was an advertising error, so this is just the second public hearing to, to clean up some of those details. Property's on the north side of True Love Drive, it's about 300 feet west of Bell's Lake Road. There is an associated annexation petition, and you can see the site here in relation to the existing corporate limit, shown in yellow. The existing zoning is Wake County Residential 30. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. The proposed zoning conditions include a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, 5,000 square feet is the minimum in T, in the TR district without zoning conditions. The maximum density proposed is three units per acre, six, six units per acre would be allowed in a conventional TR district. The minimum lot width would be restricted to 60 feet or 70 feet for corner lots, and this is compared with 40 feet in a conventional TR district. And the minimum side setbacks are proposed at five feet, and then the TR district, the combined side setbacks would be six feet. At the first public hearing, the applicant also introduced a condition to limit the land use to detached dwellings. According to the Cary Land Use Plan, the plan designation calls for low-density residential, which is one to three units per acre. This shows the maps of the properties notified at the public hearing and the sign was posted on the property. At the initial public hearing, there were no citizen speakers, there was some concern expressed by council member regarding the proposed five-foot side yard setbacks and the relatively small size of that. That concludes the staff's presentation, so I would now would call on the applicant.
And I would invite the applicant forward this time.
My name's Don Curry, Curry Engineering, 205 South Fuquay Avenue, Fuquay, Verena. On behalf of the applicant, I just want to again thank you for your consideration of this, this request for annexation and rezoning. We would in, in, like to add another condition of crawl space only homes, so no slab construction, and that came out of discussions in coordination with staff and just trying to, really just reiterating the intent for a quality product here, and so we would like to add that zoning condition as well, so it would be crawls only, no slabs, but thank you for your consideration, we appreciate it.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll ask the town attorney, since a new condition was added at this public hearing, that generates a public hearing at the planning and zoning board?
I believe it will, is that correct, Mary? And well, it's
With, typically with being introduced at the public hearing, when it is presented to the planning and zoning board, that is
Has been included.
Has been included. It's when the conditions are offered after the hearing, but before the planning and zoning.
Very good, okay, thank you. Thank you. This time I'll open up the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak on this annexation or rezoning request and invite the first speaker forward.
I'll get there.
Take your time. Please don't fall.
My name is Gary Thompson, and I'm a resident on Newcombe Street. I have some photos here I want to pass over to you. Part of why there was no citizens here at the first meeting was there was no sign to tell us that there was a meeting. And that brings up another problem with these pictures that we're going to show you here. They put the sign behind mailbox and trail, and trashcans, so people are walking by and still can't see a sign for a town of Cary hearing. You can do with that what you will. I'll speak to you briefly on our concerns. One of the biggest concerns is the width of the road. The road width of True Love is four feet narrower on the old part versus the new part where the park at Langston's is now built. This becomes a problem when construction crew equipment is parked in the road, taking up most of the space. It is a hazard not allowing the vehicles to pass safely because of vision restrictions. We have an example picture showing the concern. I'm more, I'm very nervous, I apologize.
Take your time, you're fine.
The, the second big concern is speeding. Since the park at Langston development, people fly up and down True Love, and with it being a narrower section at the top part, i, it's very dangerous, and when you add in all the, these extra homes being built and the road being narrowed, there's no signs that say children at play, there's no speed limit signs, and, you know, we would like that to be addressed, as well as some sort of a speed bump or a speed hump to slow people down, because, you know, they just don't care until something tragic happens, then you take notice. One of the other big problems we've dealt with, with the park at Langston's, is debris and trash that finds its way down our street. Now, they're below us and we still get it all the time. Now, this proposed dwellings are going to be above us, right down where all the water and wind and all that will bring everything right to us, so we're hoping that, you know, adequate protection is put up to prevent us from having to deal with the trash and debris and dust and all the things that go along with that. We've even had, I had a resident tell me earlier that someone lost three trees because of all the construction that's going on down there and the overflow. One of the other issues we have is the amount of noise and, you know, the loud noises, and the, the work goes on seven days a week, 7:00 AM Sunday morning, they're out there banging away. So sleeping in becomes a little bit of an issue when there's loud machinery going on. One of the other things too, the, the last thing on here is the lot size. I understand the park at Langston has smaller lots than what the proposed one is here, but our lots are over an acre, at the smallest one, it's a half an acre, and a lot of the surrounding areas all have a house and lot of land. So this, you know, it will fit with the park at Langston, but it doesn't really fit the surrounding area. So I hope you take our concerns into consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I have a quick question. Ms. Granton, who's responsible for putting those public hearing signs up? Is it the applicant or is it the town?
The town puts, puts those up.
This is the second time within a month that I've seen a sign that's like improperly posted, it's kind of obstructed. I mean, on Davis Drive, the sign wasn't facing perpendicular to traffic, it was parallel to traffic, so nobody could see it, they just saw the side of a sign. So maybe our staff needs some more training on how to post signs well.
Other questions, comments? Okay, we're going to refer this to our planning and zoning board for their consideration and recommendation, and that moves us to our next public hearing. It's the Phillips Property at Indian Wells rezoning request. We're going to hear a staff report and allow the applicant to explain their requests, conduct a public hearing. We will not take action on this item this evening, we are going to refer to our planning and zoning board. Ms. Granton will once again introduce this item. Ms. Granton.
No, it's Ms. Beerman.
No, I just called Ms. Beerman, Ms. Brandon, so you can call Ms. Granton, Ms. Beerman if you want.
I was thinking, I just said Ms. Beerman, I'm like, I didn't say that.
No, it's me, I made the mistake.
It, it, it happens pretty regularly.
Does it really?
And we're both graduates of Cary High School, so there's, someday we'll fill you in on all the similarities, but not This, this is a request to rezone approximately 46.67 acres located at Indian Wells Road and NC 55 Highway. The subject property is highlighted in yellow, south of Indian Wells Road, and a small portion of the property is adjacent to NC 55. Close-up aerial view of the property shows it is an assemblage. One parcel is developed with a single-family detached residential, there's a large vacant parcel. The land use plan designation is medium-density residential. A tiny portion, portion of the property had an office and institutional designation on it, but the, the lot itself, the majority of that lot was on the land use plan as medium-density residential. The existing zoning is residential 40. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. The applicant has proposed a maximum density of three dwelling units per acre. They've also proposed a 40-foot type B buffer along the eastern property line, and offered a zoning condition that says that the rear of any attached residential structures adjacent to Indian Wells or NC 55 shall include a minimum of 40% masonry requirement, like that would not be required with a detached, single-family residential, but if there were a townhome use or something of that nature, then they would have that condition in place. There are, there are also specific traffic improvements identified in the traffic study that was conducted, and like the two cases that are also being considered and were presented earlier in this same general area, the applicant has offered certain conditions, not all of them, but they've also, like the previous cases, offered an explanation of why they were offering what they were and who else was being looked at to offer the additional conditions. Property owners within 800 feet of the site were notified by mail. There is one protest petition, it is a valid protest. The applicant, or the protest petitioner's concern was how this proposed zoning without including their parcel would impact their development opportunities. The site is impacted by a stream buffer according to Cary's GIS maps, and field determination would be required at the time of site plan review. This shows the location of existing and proposed greenway trails in the vicinity of the subject property. And Cary's transportation plan identifies Indian Wells Road as an existing collector road, so therefore there would be a requirement for a 30-foot streetscape along that road, and any portion along NC 55 would require a 50-foot streetscape. And, and C 55 has the closest fixed transit route, the Triangle Transit Route. And this concludes staff's presentation, the applicant is present, and once again, I'll be available for your questions following the public hearing.
Very good. Would the applicant please come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Behren here on behalf of the applicant, as well as Standard Pacific Homes, who is the proposed builder of this site. Thank you, Debra. I haven't messed up Debra and, and Mary yet, and I'm going to keep saying it every time just to reinforce it. I only want to make three points about this site, it is 46.67 acres, it's designated medium-density residential on the land use plan. We have actually capped our density at three units per acre. We were here to, to listen to the conversation that you all had relative to the site on Wakina Road, and, and we feel confident that once we clear the zoning stage and establish a density associated with that, that's consistent with the land use plan, that if we come in under three, we won't have any issues with land use plan consistency, because it's really a creature of zoning at that point. The, the land use plan really isn't a topic of conversation at the zoning stage. The second point I want to make is with respect to the protest petition, we were disappointed to find out a protest had been filed. We had offered on our own, really without any comment from the adjacent property owner, we had offered that 40-foot type B buffer adjacent to their site, and, and really haven't received any feedback from them. We will follow up with that owner to see what exactly their concerns are. I mean, the concerns stated on the protest petition are what they are. If there's anything we can do, we will certainly, we will work with them. And finally, traffic, I just want to applaud the, the engineering staff, Mr. Jensen and, and Ms. Granton worked with my client, as well as two others who are going through this process, to come up with the conditions that have essentially been proposed as part of these three as part of these three cases. It was really, you know, we've got three cases kind of colliding at the same time, all impacting Highway 55. And I do, I want to applaud Mr. Jensen for kind of taking the bull by the horns and sending an email to everybody and said, hey, why don't we all get together, look at the impacts holistically and talk about what everybody should be doing and kind of carve it up in a way that made sense. So we certainly appreciate the staff's effort in that regard. With that said, we are consistent with the land use plan and we look forward to working with the planning and zoning board and hopefully resolving this case in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll open up the public hearing for this rezoning request and would invite the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this rezoning request? I see no one will close the public hearing. Open it up to council members for questions or comments.
Just a comment that I appreciate everything the applicant has done. I like a lot of the project, but I will say I kind of would share some of the protesters' concerns. So I hope that there's something that can be done there.
Other comments?
One comment that I have, I noticed obviously there's a lot of home development that's targeted for this area. Obviously, it brings up all kinds of thoughts about school capacity and these are all going to be homes for families with children. I hope that there's some conversation. I don't see the Crosspoint Church folks still in the audience, but I sure would hope that there's some sort of connector that's planned to the, maybe to the back end of that Crosspoint Church property rather than having people go out to 55, go up and come back on. Yeah, because that's, although there are lights at both of those intersections, that's a lot of traffic that I wish wouldn't have to go onto 55. I hope somebody thinks about that.
Okay. Other comments?
I just have a question from the applicant. Did, did the applicant attempt to purchase the land in that little sliver, that pie-shaped sliver, so that it could be more comprehensively developed?
There have been conversations with that owner. The owner showed up at our neighborhood meeting, but there have certainly been no formal attempts to acquire the property.
Is it occupied by a residence at this time?
Not to my knowledge.
Just vacant?
Yeah, it's just vacant, yeah.
Okay. All right. I think there's going to be some concern about that little sliver just because it's, it almost renders it undevelopable for a lot of it. I can't, it's hard for us sometimes to discern exactly how wide that, that is since you have then the road buffer and everything, but it'd be awfully nice if that was just part of the development.
Sure.
Other questions or comments? Okay. We are going to send this to our planning and zoning board for their consideration and recommendation. We have now reached discussion items. Our first discussion item is six point one, the Howard property rezoning request. Staff's going to give us a report. We've previously heard from the planning and zoning board's recommendation for approval. The protest petition originally filed with this action was withdrawn and there is no longer a pro, a valid protest petition. And council may take action on this item this evening. And Ms. Bierman will introduce this item.
This is the request to rezone about six point one-four acres at seventy-two sixteen Carpenter Fire Station Road. It's on the north side of Carpenter Fire Station Road adjacent to Cameron Pond. The existing zoning is R-40. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. The zoning conditions that were initially presented at the, at your public hearing included limiting the land use to detached dwellings with a maximum density of three point five units per acre and a maximum lot size of eight thousand square feet. We've had some discussion on this issue earlier where we were trying to look at those, looking at those conditions with regard to plan consistency with the, look from the standpoint of a minimum density of three point, three point zero units per acre. The revised conditions that were presented at the planning and zoning board public hearing included maintaining detached dwellings as the use, lowering the density to two point nine units per acre, and providing a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet, which is larger than the minimum lot size of the transitional residential district, which is five thousand square feet. This shows the Northwest Area Plan. We've had some discussion on this earlier this evening. Note nineteen of the plan specifies within this area outlined in blue that the plan calls for a mix of two or more residential use types excluding multifamily use, calls for a variety of lot sizes with an overall density of three to eight units per acre. Based on the concerns that we heard, we did go back and reevaluate the plan consistency. And in this case, looking at the, the location of, and the relatively small size of this portion of the, the area in, within note nineteen, and looking at that in the context of this larger area, we did find that you could make the consistency with the, the actual density falling slightly below three point unit, three point oh, that, that consistency could still be maintained because there's so much more area that's available for the medium-density development so that that could balance out and you could make a finding of that being consistent with the land use plan. Also with the minimum lot size of six thousand, six thousand square feet and, which is consistent with the minimum lot size, many of the lot sizes in the adjacent Cameron Pond area within this portion of Cameron Pond, the, the median size of the lots is about sixty-six hundred square feet. So we did find that there was some consistency with that and felt that, that the land use plan could be assessed on that basis to be found to be consistent even if the actual number fell slightly below three point oh. So we felt that that could be viewed more comprehensively and not have to be quite as rigid in looking at the actual number. This is the notification map showing properties notified of the public hearing. There was one protest petition that was submitted. That protest has since been withdrawn, so there is not a valid protest at this time. The concerns that were expressed at the public hearing included some issues related to pedestrian safety, particularly with the extension of Russo Valley Drive, which comes from Cameron Pond, and crossing Carpenter Fire Station Road to, which is crossed to connect the different pieces of Cameron Pond to their recreation area. These are issues that can be looked at as the site plan is developed and also as properties are developed where the remainder of Carpenter Fire Station Road is built out. Those are, are features that could be looked at and also in concert with NC DOT to see if there's some solutions there to, to work with pedestrian crossings as well as the ultimate road widening configuration as that's built out. Stormwater runoff, tree removal, perimeter buffers were mentioned as concerns, I think, in the protest petitions. And these are issues that we have requirements in our LDO that will be addressed at the time of the site plan subdivision plan approval. As I mentioned, density, the applicant has proposed revised zoning conditions that lower the proposed density from the original three point five to two point nine. And as I explained previously, we do feel that you can find that consistent with the land use plan with their current ordinance and, in looking at that. The planning and zoning board did recommend approval by a vote of eight to one, and at this time I'd call on Mr. Swannstrom. He's here to present the planning and zoning board's recommendation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As mentioned, we voted eight to one to recommend approval of this project. I'm going to focus on the one because that probably gives you more information. And it really was focused on two issues. One, a concern about the significant traffic issues we have at Highway 55. And I've got to remind myself what the crossroad is.
Carpenter Fire Station.
Thank you very much. Condition at that intersection is already failing, and this is most certainly going to add to that, that problem. This is a situation we've seen before, this isn't new news. We've got traffic problems all over that are constraining our, our ability to grow. And then the other concern was the protest petition, which evidently has been mitigated now. Other than that, we thought it was consistent with the, the property to the west. And we did have a connectivity discussion. It seems as if we get these more and more and we're looking, looking forward to perhaps being able to look at our connectivity ordinance in the near future and get some strategy to figure out how we deal with that.
Very good questions for Mr. Swannstrom. No? Ms. Bierman, anything else?
I have no additional comments.
Okay.
I have a question for Ms. Bierman.
Okay.
The improvements that the town is making at the intersection of Carpenter Fire Station Road and Highway 55, would that mitigate the concerns that that P&amp;D board member has about the traffic? As far as like, I mean, we're, we're changing the, the rail crossing there, we're doing a little bit of other work. I guess Mr. Jensen wants to answer it. I see him coming up behind you.
It might be easier for me to answer it. It certainly would. I think there's going to be some, some, some improvement at that intersection because now we're going to have a through movement all the way to Marshall Carpenter Road. So that should have some improvement. There's already been some improvement added. There's been some improvements made by Parkside Town Commons adding some double left turn lanes out there. So I think there's already been some improvement out there. The, the density of this track, I think it's support by eighteen dwelling units and eighteen dwelling is, you know, in reality is probably just a small, small glip at that particular intersection. So I don't think it'd have much impact at, at there at all. But, but again, the improvement's long-term is to, to have some improvement at that intersection.
Other questions, comments? Are you ready for a motion?
You looking for a motion?
I am. Looking crickets.
Yeah, the silence is deafening. Well, to foster this along, I'll make a motion to approve.
There's the motion.
A second.
And a second discussion.
I think the lackluster movement by the council might have to do with the fact that there's six thousand square foot lots. I mean, it just makes us very nervous about how this is going to end up looking for our community and we just seem to find a way to put single-family homes on tinier and tinier lots. So I think we just have that reservation, but the overall density is two point nine, right? Two point nine units?
That's correct.
So that's, that's a good thing. So.
And I totally, totally agree with that. I, I have a real issue with six thousand square foot lots. I would, I would never want my name associated with six thousand square foot lots. So I'm going to have a real hard time supporting this. Other than that, I like it.
Well, and I know the staff has, has given a lot of thought to the consistency with what's around it, but even the smallest lots to the adjacent, I think, to the west are sixty-six hundred, so we keep dropping, dropping, dropping. I'd feel better if at least it was the same size lots as what's adjacent to it because they're small enough.
If I could just clarify that point, the sixty-six hundred was the median, was the median lot size so that there are some that are smaller than that, that are closer to the six thousand, so there's a range there.
So half or above and half or below sixty-six hundred if it's the median.
Other comments? Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Does the pose? No. Motion carries six to one. Thank you. We now move to the comprehensive.
That did not make it happy.
No.
My support.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the comprehensive plan for consistency for the rezoning fourteen RZO six.
Second.
As the motion, second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does the pose? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to agenda item six point three, consideration of public art for fire station number two. And Mr. Collins will present the item. Council may take actions. Mr. Collins.
Good evening, councilors. As you see from the staff report, the fire station number two was recommended for a public art project. This, I think largely was building on the success of fire station number eight, which by the way was recently recognized as one of the one hundred top public art projects in the world.
Wow.
And the only project in North Carolina that was so recognized. So that project has proved to be extremely successful. So fire station number two was identified as a potential follow-up project. And the, following the processes of the public art master plan, we went through an artist selection process and artist Dee Dee Morrison from Birmingham, Alabama was selected to develop some concepts. And at this point, I want to emphasize that we are really just looking at concepts. And the reason for that is because we would like direction, she would like direction, staff would like direction, I think we all would like direction from council. Before we expend a great deal of time, energy, money, all of this is a more efficient way of moving forward with the project. So what you're going to see tonight, and I will walk you through the two concepts ever so briefly. So first, we have concept number one. She based her concepts on the premise that she would use tools that firefighters use. I mean, that the art would be reflective of things that firefighters use. And this first concept is to, and here, again, this is extremely conceptual, but the idea is that there would be a fire hose extending from the building, a red fire hose is what she's proposed. It ties in with the red doors of the building. Also, those fire hoses are red. And then coming out of the fire hose would be a series of light rods that would appear silver during the day and would have the opportunity for various lighting effects at night. She, her process is to actually develop very, very rough models. That's how she envisions process her art. And this slide shows you, again, a very rough concept of what it would look like during the day. The, the light rods, which are simulating water would, you know, could be at various heights, could be at various angles. They would, you see an image in the upper right that shows how they could conceivably glow at night. And again, you see the red fire hose. She also proposes include, including the Maltese cross in the design, which is an emblem of fire departments and all of our firefighters have Maltese crosses on their uniforms. So that is concept number one, which focuses on hoses and water. Her second concept takes the ladder idea. And similarly, it would be silver light rods and would appear as silver bars during the day with the opportunity for light at night. The, and, and the idea is that these would extend from the buildings slightly as they go up, so the ladder would appear three-dimensional in a sense. And again, she would include the Maltese cross because that's an important element, I think, to recognize our firefighters. This was seen as, as a significant project because of the location of fire station number two. It is on a gateway into Cary. The images all show it on the western wall, but it could also be on the eastern wall, which would be more of a gateway feature, I think, on the eastern wall, but it could go on either side. And again, I just want to emphasize that these are extremely conceptual. The scale, the way they're depicted, the way they're done would all be further refined after we're giving some direction on one of the concepts. And just to show you a little bit of her work and so you can see the tremendous attention to detail that she pays, the, as I said, the first iteration appears crude, but she is very much a detailed artist. These are very fine works. One of them is in front of a library, another is in front of a municipal building. And they, again, incorporate light so that you get a different effect at night than you do during the day. So in one sense, you have a different experience with the art depending on when you're seeing it. So with that, I'm happy to. So with that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Council members.
I have a quick question. I was looking up some of her art before. Do you know, is the plan for these to be solar powered, or are they going to, are there going to be an electric bill?
They're LED lighting, and there are no solar components to the building that I'm aware of. If there were, it could certainly be tied into that, but I do not believe that that is there. I don't believe there's solar power elements in the building at all. The estimated cost is $400 a year for the electricity, the way it currently, in its current LED configuration.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I think what I really love about Fire Station Seven's artwork is how it's integrated into the construction of the building versus this proposal, which is to affix it to the side of the building. And I think that I would rather see it, see, if we're going to do artwork, to see it integrated actually into the structure itself, rather than affixed to the side.
The, that is certainly a goal of public art projects. And many of our public art projects, not just at Fire Station Number Eight, but at many other places, are integrated. And we certainly support and encourage the idea of integrated art. The, what has to happen for that to take place is it has to take place at the early stages of the project. And that, we had that opportunity with Fire Station Number Eight, did not have the opportunity with this. And to integrate it at this point would require a significant redesign on the architect's part. And so that is why this is, this is going in the direction of integration without being fully integrated. Because, again, at this point, the station is very far along, and this approach requires only to identify electrical conduit which would go to the art and places to affix it. If you go beyond that, then it's into really significant redesign of the building. So I sympathize with that comment and appreciate it very much.
Well, I really love the intricate detail of Ms. Morrison's work that's demonstrated here. And had we had the opportunity to be able to integrate that somehow in structurally, I think that would have been a real asset for this building. Love to see something by her maybe placed somewhere else integrated in. But in my opinion, I think I would rather not have the artwork included in the fire station if it's going to be affixed versus integrated in. I think I'd probably just save the money and not put it in at this time, and just go, you know, just be happy that we have a really nicely designed building.
So I had a money question, spinning off what Ms. Robinson said. And I just want to make sure you understand, so $110,000 was appropriated, and $105,000 has been either encumbered or expended. There's $5,000 left, and the staff report says there is sufficient funding to complete the work. And I'm trying to figure out how the rest of this could be done for $5,000.
It's not to be done for $5,000. The encumbrance, the encumbrance of the $105,000, and part of that has been, there has, I don't have the figures directly in front of me, but some of that $105,000 has been expended in design fees.
Can you give, do you have just a ballpark? I'm trying to figure out how much money we've spent so far, and how much money we'd end up. I guess if we spend everything that's been appropriated, it'd be $110,000. Is that right?
We can have Stacy teach the budget office address that.
And while Stacy's coming to the mic, I'll just say why I'm asking that question. I agree with Ms. Robinson. I think the thing that makes Fire Station, I think it's eight, so effective is...
I'm messing up everything today.
No, you're not. You're only one off. That's all. Is its integration. And if, as we had asked, if what we had asked for had been interpreted correctly, this would have been integrated into this building too. Let's just call it what it is. And so now we're left with the option of doing art that's not integrated. And I'm, I'm okay with spending money on art that I think adds a lot to the building. And I think, you know, the, what you have here as examples of what she's done in other places are really nice-looking, but I'm not thrilled and wowed by even the concept for this building. And so I would rather not go forward with it, and would rather save that money and put it for something else at this point. That's, so how much would that be, Stacy?
Good evening, council. Mr. Collins is exactly right. There's been $110,000 total appropriated to this project for this work. Oftentimes, what council or what staff will do is when we realize that there is a potential contract, we'll encumber that funding instead of aside to honor that contract. And that's what's happened here, is $105,000 has been encumbered in order to honor the work that Mrs. Morrison would do. If we were not to pursue that, we could just unencumber those funds. They would fall back into the project. The project could be closed, and the funds would return to fund balance.
And how much of those funds would be returned to fund balance?
The entire $110,000, I believe.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's for, but what about the conceptual design?
She has done design work. I mean, all of this is work, and I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't have that figure available.
But it's some amount mined from $110,000. But the bulk of the money would return.
The bulk?
The bulk of the money would return.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm sorry you had to come all the way down here for that.
Other comments?
I don't feel strongly one way or the other here. I'm not an art expert. If you're asking for me between the two choices, I like the hoses rather than the ladders. I think the, I think the project would add something to that building. I mean, I kind of like it. It isn't integrated. I would prefer it to have been integrated. But I'm kind of okay with, with the design as presented. So, but I mean, I'm not strong, if we didn't do it...
For $100,000?
I wouldn't be pressed for it.
$110,000?
$110,000, well, it's going to be less.
Ms. France, you look like you're about to say something.
I was waiting for Mr. Yerhaugh to finish. I would agree with Ms. Robinson's comments wholeheartedly, and I'm so thankful she said them, so I didn't have to. And I share Ms. Adcox's thoughts as well. And I got to be honest, the artist didn't build anything you see here on the screen. She may have designed it, but a big metal machine spit it out.
Actually, she does build it, Councilor France. She, she has a...
She cut out all these little intricate...
She has a studio, I could show you pictures of her studio. It's in an old, it's in an old coal plant in Birmingham, Alabama. She took one of the old smelting plants and has an incredible array of machine cutting, die cutting. I mean, yes, it's cut, but she does it. I mean, she's, she's a hands-on artist. That was one of the things that the committee, the artist selection panel liked about her work, was that she actually did the work herself. So she does do these works.
When I wrote down my comments earlier, I mean, again, Ms. Robinson nailed it. The first word I wrote down was integrated. It's not integrated. To me, it looks bolted on. You said affixed.
It's like a game show.
I would agree with Mr. Yerhaugh. If I had to pick one, I'd pick the hoses or the water squirting, but I don't know that it adds value to the building or the project.
Ms. Bush, anything to add?
No, I have to say, when I was, I was quite enamored with her artwork when I went online, when we got the staff report. I mean, it's, I like the idea that it, and I think we've talked about this at the council, when we talk about the fountain, that it looks one way during the day, and our goal of it to look something totally different at night. And I thought, a lot of her artwork looks like that. And that's, that's something I think that council expressed an interest in. But there is this affixed afterthought that kind of gnaws at me, that it looks like we just kind of put it up there. And that's why I love Fire Station Eight so much, is it's built as part of it. And so I think if I had the option to save that money and use it in another, in another public building, I would want to use that money and do it right, and do it the first time as part of the design process, and hopefully use her, use her. I think some of the things that I saw online, you know, what she did at the public library and Waverly Public Library, were just absolutely beautiful. And get her involved early on in the process. Because otherwise, I got the feeling that, I know you didn't have a problem with it, but it just looked like, oh, we need a piece of art there, let's just put it there. Rather than how Fire Station Eight just really grabs you and go, oh, that's, that's something.
I think because we knew we would like to have had it integrated, and it isn't, it looks more affixed to us, because we had that original intention. But if we didn't have that original intention, I don't think it would have...
So just the eight of us would go by and go?
Well, it could be more than eight.
Mr. Smith, anything to add?
No, I think that, you know, the harsh reality is, we're kind of picking this up at the end stage, and, you know, as I shared before, earlier, you know, I take some ownership in the, in the original process where we had the piece of art on the property. I think, I think it's, I think it's great that we have a standard that it says it's integrated, but, and we've decided that that's what we're going to stay with. At the same time, I think, you know, firefighters, and there were a lot of people involved that really liked that freestanding piece of art. And, but that's why I'm struggling. I mean, I'm not second-guessing any decisions or anything. I'm just saying, I think that worked better for that artist, you know? And now we have a little bit of this. But, you know, I'll tend to support Ed a little bit in the sense that we're staring at it, and, and we're getting this sense of it being bolted on. But I'd rather trust the process here. I think it could end up being a nice piece on there. You know, could it have been something different if we'd got to the front of this, you know? Who knows? I think that's just speculation. I like the idea of the different colors, morning and night, as Lori said, so, you know, am I, am I jumping up and down with jumping jacks? No, but I think it's a thoughtful, deliberate concept, and I would give it a shot. And I would do, again, the hose one versus the ladders.
If I may add one note, that I think that the approach, and again, you're seeing it at an extremely conceptual phase, and I think the effect that she would be going for would be to, for it to appear, for it to seem like the hose is actually coming out of the building. So it has not so much of a bolted-on effect as it's emerging from the building, which isn't a nod toward integration. So as the hose comes out of the building, and then it shows, gives this light display, which, you know, is a, is a bit of whimsy, I'll grant you that, but it gives it a, it, it's not that it's just sitting there on the building. It would be coming out of the building in a, in a way. And also, throughout the process, you would see a more refined design before this goes forward, so into the construction phase. But this is the type of feedback that is part of the process in terms of developing a project that, that we all can ultimately feel at least comfortable with.
Just I'm the only one that hasn't weighed in, and I'm struggling too. I mean, if I had to pick one, I'd pick the fire hose too. But then I agreed that I'd like it integrated in the beginning, so I'm struggling with this. I'm also thinking that since it is affixed, even though it might not look affixed, you have the opportunity later, if you don't do it now, to add the art at another time. Of course, the likelihood of that happening is probably nil, but it's always a possibility. That's what I'm thinking. And I got to decide quick, because I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we return the funds that would have been used for public art on this fire station to our general fund.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yes, but I would need clarification.
So you're making the second, Mr. France?
Yeah, second.
Second. Discussion. Tell us about your clarification.
Well, there's a three... The motion was to return all the funds, and from what I've heard, we wouldn't...
Excuse me, minus the amount that needed to be paid to the artist for her designs.
Okay.
I'm in my motion.
Second. You accept the amendment. Comments? Additional comments, questions?
Well, I think that, I'll start. I mean, I think that, I think the artist brings a lot to the table. I think has a great reputation. You know, the sense I get, and I may be wrong, and you can all correct me, is that we're as focused on that attachment and that bolting on. And I think we have an opportunity to continue to see that develop. Now, if you just don't like it, that's fine. But I think there's a little bit more here at stake about having some art on, on this building that has a distinctive look. And I, you know, I think it does. So I'd like to give it a shot, and I'd like to, I'd like to see us seriously consider not putting that money away.
Okay.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I think $100,000 is a lot of money. It's a huge amount of money for a community that has a lot of needs. In my opinion, the fire station out west, which is visited by a lot of citizens because it has the police substation attached to it, probably had more benefit having the public art there. Not a lot of people really visit a fire station, in my opinion. I would much rather take this as a lesson learned, and as we move forward with our public library, which will draw hundreds of thousands of people each year, I would like to make sure that the artwork is integrated from the very get-go, and that we apply that money for public art there, because it would really be seen and enjoyed to a much greater extent. And I just don't think this is the best use of our money at this time. And I wish I had spoken up when we were doing the bridge over Route One with the leaves attached, because when I saw it, I thought, I don't really like that. But I didn't speak up, and I really don't like it now. So I just feel like I need to say my piece.
I don't like the bridge either.
Did you say you liked it, or you didn't like it?
Didn't like it.
Oh, okay.
Still don't like it.
I don't like the bridge either, so we agree on that one. But from a visitation standpoint, I agree, the library is going to get a lot more visitors than this fire station. But this is in a gateway position to the town. And I do think, I mean, again, it's only a concept, and it's hard for us to, to say exactly what it's going to look like. But if it looks anything like what I think it's going to look like, it's going to be in addition to the town. I mean, we have the Cary Theater there with nice lights, I think, up the street. I mean, I really think this is going to, it will add something to our, to our downtown. We're, we would like to add something to our downtown. I think this is an opportunity to do that.
Other comments?
I'm struggling.
Keep talking, yeah, because...
And the reason I'm struggling, and actually, is that what you just said really makes a lot of sense, is does, does the investment, does this $100,000 investment make sense here, or does it make sense somewhere else? And as much as we're struggling with costs for downtown park, where we know a lot of people will visit, if I had to, if it was a choice that I'm making, which is not the choice we're really making at this table, we're making this table, do we want it on the fire station or not, I would rather put my money, you know, into where we know people will be spending a lot of time. But Mr. Yerhaugh makes a good point as well. It is a gateway, and I'll, we've put, we've invested a lot in downtown with the streetscape, with the theater, with the art center, with the Jones House. And it is a...
I would say, I'm still comfortable with this being a gateway piece, because it is designed so beautifully. It's very much to me like Curtis Westbrook's Flatiron Building over on the eastern side of town. It's so attractive. It makes you feel good that you're coming into downtown, and I think this would have the same, this would...
It has, that has art on the outside of it.
It has like a little frog guy pushing a lawnmower. I don't know if that exactly counts.
I forgot that guy's little, yeah, he has a name, the frog has a name. I can't remember it.
Okay, have we exhausted?
I would agree with Ms. Robinson. The building is what's beautiful. It always seems like we, we build beautiful buildings and then try so hard to put weird or different or emotion in inspiring art pieces out front that almost are designed to get a shock and an awe, and when the building itself is what's beautiful. Actually, I like the frog. The lawn's always...
You're mowing the lawn.
I like the frog. I'm not trying to, the frog.
But...
It's quirky, but it's cute.
I don't know.
Okay, anything else? We have a motion. You want to repeat your motion?
I make a motion that we return the funds that have not been expended to date to our general fund.
Okay, that's the motion. And we have a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Does oppose? Motion carries five to two. Thank you, Mr. Collins. We now move to Item 6.4, the annual street improvements project approach. Mr. Hubert will present the item, and then council may take action. Mr. Hubert will present the item and then council may take action.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Our current street improvements projects typically include performing repairs to our worst rated streets followed by resurfacing. The town of Cary currently maintains approximately 465 miles of streets. The estimated cost to resurface five percent of our streets annually is 4.3 million, requires a 20-year pavement life. Tonight, staff will present additional pavement maintenance strategies, if you're concerned, to help increase our ability to maintain our streets and stretch our street improvement dollars. In addition to resurfacing five percent of our lowest rated streets.
That's him?
Staff recommends allocating 20 to 30 percent of the street improvements budget for the additional pavement management strategies I'm going to review with you tonight. The pavement lifecycle chart shown includes pavement ratings on the vertical access and pavement life in years on the horizontal access. The higher the payment rating, the better condition of the street. The curve illustrates a typical pavement lifecycle, the accelerated deterioration once the pavement condition hits fair, and the associated increase in cost to address pavement repairs as the ratings deteriorate. The chart also shows how tony preventative maintenance can create value by extending pavement life and then laying the need for more substantial repairs. Preventative maintenance. Staff continues to evaluate preventative maintenance strategies and recommends including patching, rejuvenation, and crack sealing in our street improvements program. Patching. Currently, our public works department performs patching to address potholes. The street improvements program would complement this effort by identifying areas of substantial alligator cracking on streets that are not included on the resurfacing list. The damaged areas would then be replaced with an asphalt pa, patch without resurfacing the street. This strategy will address pavement distresses having the largest impacts in our pavement condition ratings, as well as helping to reduce potholes. Rejuvenation. This is a strategy that would be new to Cary, but has been used in other local jurisdictions. During the press, process of weathering, the asphalt surface oxidizes. And as a result, the binder holding the asphalt together becomes brittle and cracks. Rejuvenators help prolong asphalt life by penetrating into the asphalt and replacing oils that are lost due to oxidation. They also seal the asphalt surface while increasing flexibility. And I like to think of rejuvenators as kind of like skin cream for asphalt. The slide, the slide on the left shows a product called Reclamite. Um, it's a type of rejuvenator. It comes out pink from a sprayer and it takes 20 minutes to absorb into the asphalt surface and then it becomes clear. So the other picture shows Reclamite that's been applied and as you can see, it doesn't have a substantial change to the appearance of the asphalt, um, but has been shown to increase asphalt pavement life by up to five years. Crack sealing is a cost-effective treatment to seal the asphalt surface and keep water out of pavement structure. However, it's not very aesthetically pleasing and therefore staff is not recommending it on residential streets. The picture on the left shows the application of crack seal and the material, or the equipment needed to do it. And the picture on the right, um, shows crack seal that's been applied on a Cremen Parkway adjacent to Panther Creek High School, which is maintained by DOT. As cracking continues, additional crack sealing can be applied to maintain the seal of the asphalt surface. Increased thoroughfare maintenance. This slide shows paving over a pavement reinforcement grid. Pavement reinforcement grids can be made from fiberglass, non-woven fabrics, and polyester. The installation costs range between four and eight dollars per square yard. They can significantly extend pavement life by helping to decrease crack growth and also distributing vehicle weight loads over a larger area. Staff also recommends milling in our street improvements project approach to limit the elevation difference between the top of the resurfacing layer and the gutter. Milling allows for removal of the old asphalt layer so the new asphalt surface can be level with the existing gutter. Milling also helps remove surface distresses and reduce pavement repairs needed in advance of resurfacing. Milling is similar in cost as compared to paving in the gutter, which is what we, what we predominantly do now. Staff recommendation, in addition to resurfacing five percent of our lowest rated streets annually, staff recommends allocating 20 to 30 percent of the street improvements budget to implement preventative maintenance strategies including pave, patching, rejuvenation, and crack sealing. Increased thoroughfare maintenance and milling. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, very good. Questions?
I have a question. Um, the skin cream for asphalt, um, is it slippery at all after it's dried? Does it change the safety of the road at all?
DOT is looking at that, um, for residential and collector's streets, streets that aren't over 35 miles an hour, it's not an issue, but for streets where you have faster vehicle speeds, um, they're still doing some studies on that.
Okay.
So we're looking at doing that on streets that are slower, slower, lower volume roads.
And I want to follow up on the, the road cream or whatever.
Road cream.
That, that's applied to only good and excellent condition roads or can you do it on a fair condition road or parred road or what?
You can do it on a fair condition road. Um, the recommendations that we have from the manufacturers to try to stick with roads that are in really good shape and to try to keep them in really good shape.
Okay. A second.
My question was going to be, um, in follow-up to Ms. Robinson's question about slipperiness, is that wet or dry? Does it increase slipperiness wet? Does it increase slipperiness dry? Well, that's hard to say.
It, it, it penetrates into the asphalt after, well, and it depends on the type of rejuvenator too, but for Reclamite, it penetrates after 20 minutes and then, um, after three months, after it's been there for three months, they're, they're really not seeing a whole lot of difference in.
Performance.
In the skid, in the skid resistance.
Wow.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, just, uh, is there any issues with bicyclists or, you know, cycling? Is there anything specific about this treatment that might make it more slippery for people with a much, much thinner tire?
Not that I'm aware of now. It, it, it's, it returns the asphalt to like a, a new surface, the, the texture of a new surface, so it'll, it would be like resurfacing the street. Um, it would, it would be that.
How long did you say it takes to dry?
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes. Okay, that's really nice.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, the only, if, if, if there is a concern at a certain speed of it being somewhat slippery, I think, you know, I mean, our culture, we don't believe in speed limits, we believe in speed minimums, so, you know? And a lot of our roads are designed for faster speeds. So I don't want us being lulled into something that says, well, it's a 25 mile speed limit, so therefore let's do it when the road's built and designed for, let's say, 45. And the reality is, that's what most people go. I mean, that's just, just look around, that's just the way it is out there. And I just, I just don't want us thinking that we're putting this on a back road because of 25 mile an hour traffic and then we have, um, a potentially dangerous situation where it's slippery. That's all. I mean, I, I don't know how you apply the formula. You know, if you're on cul-de-sacs, that may be fine, but you're on two lane roads that we've had a lot of cut-through traffic and all of that other stuff and we're trying to slow things down and, you know, it works for a day, people kind of go back to their habits. I mean, that's, I, I'm not trying to be glib about it, but I mean, I just think we have to be really pragmatic where that goes. I'm not saying we don't use it, but I think we've got to be very careful.
A second.
So in your recommendation, Kyle, from the staff about this, is it implied that as the state is doing these studies on, continues to do the studies on this product, that if it doesn't appear to be a, a good use in Cary, we just wouldn't do it? I mean, by approving this, we're not approving that particular method, is that correct? Because it's not imply, I mean, it's not stated here. The milling is, but that particular thing isn't in the motion or in the recommendation?
I think it is.
They, they've done studies on, um, on lower volume streets and there's really no concerns with that. The studies that they're doing right now, and I, I think they're actually doing one on I-40 towards Wilmington where they're looking at really high volume streets, so I, I've got.
Okay. Let me restate my question. Mr. Smith is right. What we, um, sign as a low-speed street meets the letter of this, but what people really drive may not give us the performance that we're looking for, is my only question. And so I just want us to be careful, and I know y'all would be, not to set us up for it looks good on paper, but it doesn't perform in real life, that's all. You would never do that on purpose, obviously, but I, I think there'd be some concern about that. Um, and we wouldn't want to do it, and then later people say, well, yeah, I know I was going 10 miles over the speed limit, but really.
Let me, let me ask a summarizing question to make sure I totally understand this. We have about 475 miles of road we maintain. 60 percent is in good and excellent condition, which means 40 percent's in fair or poor condition. Is that, I think I read that somewhere. And if that's true, fair condition, the way I'm understanding it, means it needs attention. And if not given attention, it will quickly turn to poor. And so then that leads me up to my question. The formula you're proposing will keep us at least 60 and improve that or just maintain 60 percent good and excellent? Where is that going to take us?
I think that's an effort to try to, try to maintain where we are right now.
Okay. So if we want to do better on our roads, we need to even allocate more. Okay. Other questions, comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to item six point five. It's the bid award for the New Hope Church Road Trailhead Park. Mr. Cueden will present the item and council may take action.
Good evening, council. Uh, the town received bids for the construction of the New Hope Church Road Trailhead on May 29th. After reviewing the bids, staff recommends the project be awarded to Barn Hill Contracting. And staff further requests that council appropriate $490,000 of park payment lieu fund and $68,431 of greenway payment lieu fund. Um, let me take a moment here just to talk about the, the project. As you can see on the screen, we have a layout of the trailhead and its primary purpose will be to serve the 23-mile-long American Tobacco Trail. Uh, the town does serve just, uh, or maintains just over 4.6 miles of the American Tobacco Trail. And this segment of the American Tobacco Trail actually receives over 90 trail users an hour on a weekend, which is actually the highest segment of any of the town's greenway segments. As noted in the staff report, we did receive just over 870,000 in grant funding and the grant kind of stipulated some of the items to include, which included a 100-car parking lot, um, located here. And we have a restroom building and we have the connection trails and the, the supplemental items such as the BMP for the impervious areas, some of the landscaping areas, uh, that's, that's part of it also. And also important item for the trail is potable, uh, drinking water because that's a very limited out here in this location. The project also for the restroom, um, is planned to include a 2,400-foot sewer line and that's to serve the property to the south that the town also owns. And staff did review several options, uh, looking at both the restroom and the sewer line to see what would be the best and most cost feasible and feel like the, what we bid and, and are recommending here is, is what we're recommending. I also want to bring up, um, at your last quasi-judicial meeting, um, last week, you had, uh, looked at this site plan. There were some questions about, uh, trail connectivity. And so the, the green area right here is actually the trailhead site that we're talking about. And Amberly, as part of their plan, actually, um, dedicated the parkland for this. Um, it's a little hard to see on this plan, the dash lines versus the solid green lines which represent the, uh, existing trails, but you can see there's a solid, um, green line that comes up here and comes up around Amberly Lake and gets over to Cary Park Lake. And there's also, then you can see the dash lines that are here and the developer will be responsible for constructing the portion here. And then the town, as part of the 68,000 that we're asking for, would be constructing the, uh, portion, um, on the park site. And once those two portions are, uh, finished, that would connect to over 10 miles of, uh, existing trails, uh, greenways or street-side trails that are out there currently. Um, so as I mentioned, the town did receive a $68,431 payment lieu, uh, from, uh, the developer because when we were in the design phase, we weren't sure who was going to get there first, so we decided to get the payment lieu to make sure that, uh, we could get that, that done as part of the project also. And, um, I'm available if you have any questions at this time.
Okay. Ms. Robinson?
I have a question. Can you tell me how much the bid alternative came in for the playground structure?
For the playground structure itself?
Mm-hmm. And what is that mustard bean-shaped item there on, I can't read it?
This is the, uh, area of the, um, where the playground was going, so kind of in that, that shape in that location. And I don't have the exact breakdown in there, but, um, the total of the alternates, which included the playground, the shelter, and the, um, uh, trash was, uh, 245. And I could get these exact numbers, but it's around a, a hundred thousand.
Around a hundred thousand for the playground?
Yeah.
Um, this is a great timely example of how I'd much rather spend a hundred thousand to meet some other need than have the artwork affixed to the side of the fire station. I believe that children would enjoy riding on the American Tobacco Trail much more if they had a fun destination. When you take a child out cycling, you have to have something to go to. And right now, what happens is you take your child riding down the tobacco trail for five or six, eight miles, and then at some point stop at a tree and go, okay, let's turn around now. And your child looks at you like, you have got to be kidding me. I came all this way for this tree. And I mean, it's just, it's very difficult for children to be motivated by that. And I think that if we had a playground structure at this park, it would give a lot of families much more enjoyment of the American Tobacco Trail. It, it's fine if we don't do it now, but I'd like, if we don't do it now, I'd like us to really seriously consider it when we meet in October. I might possibly just make a motion that we include the playground structure at this time. And you guys can vote me down if you don't agree, but I'd, I think we ought to put a playground structure in with, in agreement with approving the staff recommendation for the original appropriation.
And while I, I totally understand.
I made that as a motion, I'm sorry. Do I mean a second?
Oh.
I get a second or not?
There's a motion.
What was your motion?
My motion was that we approve staff recommendation for the appropriation for the trailhead and in addition, appropriate money for a playground structure to be included with this.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second discussion. While I, I think that's a great idea, I would much rather see it go through the budget process and make sure it's the highest priority item and it might very well be, uh, but I would hate to see it leapfrog something else that's been waiting and, anyway, that's my concern.
I'd be more comfortable with a mid-year appropriation, even though it won't be mid-year if we were to look at it in October, only because it's tough to make those, uh, decisions about, is there enough money in that pot or that pot and what other projects have waited kind of at the table in real time. I, I support the, the idea.
The concept, yeah.
Absolutely. But I think the timing is, is the problem for me.
There also, I mean, there may be, I don't know if this is the case or not, but there may be some cost savings, um, doing the playground in conjunction with constructing the trailerhead instead of going back and adding it later. I, I don't know, I would assume so, but, you know, I kind of feel like, you know, if we're going to do this, let's do this the carryway and let's do it right the first time. I mean, to me, it's kind of like what we discussed at the Carpenter Park, you know, where we thought we were coming up short, but it's like, no, if we're going to do this, let's do it the right way, do it the carryway, so.
Yeah, I, I actually, in this one, in this case, that I really liked the public art that was included. I thought it was really interesting and could be a destination. I would take the kids to go see these great big tall people that was in the, you know, public art, but I'd also say, let's go see the great big tall people and go play. Although mine are too old to play on those, but I would, I would like to see us do parks that have an affinity for all different types of people who want to come to the park, not just to see the public art, but to play at the public art, to have this be a rest stop along the way. along the way for, uh, as a trailhead. I think it, it's nice to be able to, like you said, do it right, do it the, the, as Jack Smith also says, the carryway.
Other comments?
Well, to Mr. Francis' point, I mean, he makes a good point about, uh, an economy of scale of doing this at the same time. It would be hard for me to believe that a, a 10, a three-month difference, a three, three months would make a huge difference with that, that we would still have time to, to see where the money's coming from, to see if it's going to deprive us of some other opportunity, and still make that decision when we get together in October. So, that's why I'm going to support the concept 100%, we're going to vote against the motion.
Well, is that a possibility, to have staff go and, and find out what the difference in potential cost would be? If, you know, is there a cost savings of doing it sooner rather than later, right, waiting for, till October?
Well, I'm just...
Is there any issue associated with it? I don't, I'm just asking staff, is there a...
Yeah, we can bring back that information to you and, uh, of the exact breakdown, and also, the playground would be one of the last things, um, constructed as part of this, so that would buy us a little bit of time to come back to you with a little more information.
Okay.
I think one general word of caution, too, is that, uh, it's very early in the year. You're going to be facing, I am certain, uh, some other issues that will come up where you'll need money during the year. So, I think we would feel more comfortable a little later into the year making those kind of judgments.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm willing to amend my motion that we approve the, um, staff recommendation for the appropriation for the base bid at this time, but also direct staff to bring this back to us, uh, for consideration. Let us know the ramifications of doing the playground structure at this time versus waiting, and, um...
Mr. France?
Second.
Okay. Um, further discussion? I, I think that's an excellent, uh, thing to do, excellent way to move forward.
Yeah, I was delaying, because I'm not sure I buy into the argument that just because you're riding eight miles and a child is tired, that we now have to build playgrounds at every park. I just don't buy that argument. I, I think that, uh, we ought to look at all our parks, we ought to look at them in a holistic way, we ought to look at what makes sense for that park, and this may very well make sense. I'm not actually disagreeing, I just think this is a, a troubling way to, to start managing town affairs when, uh, on a whim, we start doing things at this point. Now, let's, you know, my feeling is stay with a, a well-thought-out park, and if we find that that is a, uh, you know, an amenity that makes sense there and it's affordable, uh, I don't think, you know, Donna, you make a good point about doing it at the same time, but somehow I don't think adding the playground equipment, which that far out, all I see is vandalism, that, you know, that's my dour look at things, but I, you know, I think it's, it's something that we give thoughtful consideration to at the right time, but I don't think it should be right now.
Okay. Other comments? Do we have a motion?
I would just say, for the record, it was included in the staff report as an option, so it's not like I just pulled it out of my hat.
No, I, I understand, no, I understand that. I just said that. It, it's, uh, it's something that let's move forward at, at the right, at the right time and the right...
That public art could get vandalized out there, too, Jack. Miss Second.
I was just going to clarify that the, Ms. Robinson, your motion is to approve the staff report as it's recommended, or to approve the recommendation as it came to us, but to ask the staff to come back and tell us what would it take, and what would it look like, and what would it cost, and all those things. And so, you kind of get what you want and what you want.
Okay.
And that never happens.
And if this part of the trailhead, is it, I haven't been all the way up to New Hope, I generally get on Kelly Chapel, but is it, uh, half-paved and half-pressed gravel at that part?
Yes. This is where the paving starts and heads north.
And heads north. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now move to item 6.6, the Maynard Water Storage Tank Project. Mr. Brown will present this item, and then council may take action.
Good evening, council. Next area of consideration is a report that addresses alternatives for, for providing additional water storage tank capacity in the town's water distribution system. Uh, after a careful engineering evaluation of many of the factors that affect the performance of our water system, uh, we're recommending now that we have a net addition of 2 million gallons of additional storage, uh, in the vicinity of the southern portion of the Maynard Road Loop, uh, to meet the water system needs, uh, in, in that central portion of Cary. Um, the existing water tank on southeast Maynard Road across from Cary High School was, of course, an important consideration in this analysis. Uh, this tank capacity is limited to only half a million gallons, so we needed to end up with 2 and 1/2 million in the vicinity, and so this is well short of the, uh, current needs. Uh, this tank was also built in 1966 and is also going to be in need of significant rehabilitation in the near future. So, we hired the engineering firm of Hazen and Sawyer, they prepared a technical report, and, uh, that's attached to your staff report, and has studied a range of options that were available to meet our needs. Uh, after careful review of this report, and after conducting a public meeting last week on July 9th, staff recommends that we proceed with option two in that report, which consists of rehabilitating the existing water tank and constructing a new 2-million-gallon tank, uh, in the vicinity of the southern Maynard Road Loop at a site that we're still trying to determine at this point. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Make a motion to approve option two.
There's a motion and a second, and, and I want to personally thank staff for doing all you did to say this. I know, I don't think there's anybody on council that wanted that tower to go away, and we were getting bombarded, and preliminary information, like you said, showed that it just didn't look like it was going to happen, and so the fact that you were able to save it is a great thing for all of us, and we're all very happy, and to me, this is a no-brainer, so I don't know what the rest of you think.
I just, to echo the, thanks to staff, also thanks to the community members that, you know, were very passionate about this and really helped, uh, keep a fire lit under us and staff to, to, to take the extra time and, and effort and, and really investigate this, and, you know, come up with a, a win-win, if you will, for the, the community and the town. Um, you know, as, as somebody who's got a wife as a Cary High grad and five kids who are Cary High grads, one more to go.
You were being lobbied?
We, we, we have pictures of every single one of them on the football field, three of them played football, and every single one of those pictures, that water tower's in the background, and every different year on that tower, that's, that kid's here, you know, so it's...
Cool.
And it's that way for everybody in the community. Um, everyone around there that lives in that area has all gone to Cary High School or is part of the Cary High School family. It's, it is much more than a water tower. It's, it's part of our community values and our history, and it's just who we are as a community, so I, I think this is a wonderful thing.
I would just like to say that I find it so fascinating about serving in public office, that there is nothing less popular than putting up a water tower than taking it down.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, I, this has floored, this whole experience has floored me, but, um, we just now know that water towers are just a very special thing.
We're a water tower town.
It is a special thing. Mr. France mentioned the word "history," which...
Oh! Yay!
And sometimes the history of a place can be defined by a little more than where a famous person happened to be born, or where a famous event occurred. History of a place can be defined by its traditions, and I think that's what we have here. Uh, we have traditions of generation-plus of teenagers with school spirit and pride in their school, seeing that name on the tower, and now we have adults who remember that school spirit and school pride they have when they drive by that tower, and I hope that spirit and pride, and I think this, we have evidence of it with 2,000 names on, on a petition, uh, has translated into a spirit and a pride for its town, more so than just the school. Um, and I, I think that tower, therefore, is a tradition and is really part of our history, and I think this fight for the tower, uh, to save the tower, that has gone on here for the past year or so, has added to the fabric of that history, because I think for a generation from now, people are going to be saying, "Gee, my parents tried to save that." And that's history.
We should have T-shirts.
And, and, and for that, for, for these people who, who fought successfully, it looks like, to save this, I can't resist this, I have to say, "Thank you."
Ah, and, oh, can't we adjourn now?
Okay. Um, following up on Ms., uh, Ms. Robinson's...
That'll be in the paper.
...comments about putting up a tower, I do want to mention that I went to the public information session at the very end, and my understanding was that all the residents where the new tower is going to go were happy and, "Oh, that would be a good neighbor." Am I incorrect?
That's a fair assessment. We heard from several people in that area, and they, uh, saw that as a, a good alternative to what possibly could be developed on that property, so we didn't hear a lot of objection, just a few concerns that we can address, but...
Okay, very good. And my understanding is class of 2015 is already up. Is that right, Mr. France?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, in preparation for him coming back to school soon.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Once again, thank you. All right, we move to item 6.7, Appointments to the Aging Issues Task Force. Mr. Yerha.
Alrighty. At our last council meeting, uh, we authorized the creation of the Aging Issues Task Force, and we set some parameters for that task force. And included in the staff report at our last meeting was the process to appoint the members of the task force, and that process has resulted in the seven names that are included or attached to this month's agenda. Uh, but before moving for adoption, let me say that I appreciate all of the interest that's been shown in this task force since our last meeting. Uh, we've had a number of people contact us. Of course, the process did not call for applications this time, but to show Cary's spirit once again, we had people come to us to volunteer for this thing, and that, I think that really shows something for, for our citizens. Um, and at the same time, it may show some particular interest in this specific issue, which we kind of suspected was a, was an important one all along. Uh, for those people who are not selected, not going to be selected tonight, I do want to mention that the task force meetings are public meetings, uh, they can be attended, and like everything in Cary, uh, you have an opinion at various times to express your opinion on a particular issue. And should the task force recommend, after it's all said and done, and this is not the intent at this point, clarify that, but should it occur that a regular, ongoing board or commission is needed in this area, uh, we will certainly have a full-blown application process where anybody can apply, just as we do for any of our other boards or commissions. Again, that's not the intent at this time to have an ongoing board or commission, but if we do, the process will be like the other boards. It won't be like, like this. This was done in interest of time, um, and using a process that we've used before, where the council members select an individual, uh, and I think we have some very, very good people. The task force, again, will only meet for four or five months. Uh, we hope to have it wrapped up by the end of the, uh, end of the year. The seven names on, on our agenda...
Would you like to make that informal motion, including the names?
Okay.
That way, we won't have to read them twice.
Very good. I'll, I'll move that we appoint the following seven people to the Aging Issues Task Force. Ms. Jimmy Butts, Jane Ford Clark, Jared Kratzer, Harold Steerhoff, Kay Strufalino, Doc Thorne, and Ellie Tomlinson.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Anything else to add?
No.
Anyone else?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Yerha. We're now at council-initiated requests. The first one is school capacity. Mrs. Robinson asked for this item. Uh, we do have Mr. Fletcher in the audience that is available, uh, for questions or, um, information, and he, he will come forward as we need him. Ms. Robinson?
Great, thank you very much, and first of all, let me start off by saying thank you to Mr. Fletcher for joining us here tonight, and, um, especially as long as we're going this evening. Um, uh, the reason why I brought this forward is I, I think, like many of you, I've been hearing from citizens who have been impacted by the capping that's going on. And oftentimes, at this table, we see, we bring in a little bit of what we do outside of the council, our council work. For example, you know, Gail will do proclamations that have to do with wellness and, and health, since she is a nurse practitioner. Um, my other life right now is working as a real estate broker, so I'm hearing from a lot of people who will, um, have a big problem with the caps that are on the, the neighborhoods out in, for us, it's in western Cary, but you also have schools that are in Morrisville, Holly Springs, and Apex that are capped. Um, the problem is that it is taking away stability from these neighborhoods, so it makes it very hard for someone who owns a house to then sell the house, because buyers don't want to put their child in a house where they don't know where the child's going to go to school. The child won't be attending school with his neighbors. And, um, it's been fairly impactful, and I think we've been hearing about it because we're kind of the boots on the ground. And so, I just wanted to see if there's, first of all, an interest among this council for us simply to articulate that concern that our citizens have to the school board to see if they might want to just delve into the matter and just see if there are any alternatives, just verify that the cap that they have imposed is actually as productive, um, making it worthwhile to have the negative impacts of the cap. And, um, I'm not, you know, in, in no way do I want us to do a resolution or make a demand that the school board do this. This is not an adversarial approach in any way. I simply want us to, wanted to see if y'all would be interested in articulating the concern that we've heard from our citizens.
Okay. Ms. Bush, weren't you the co-sponsor?
Yes, and I, I think, um, Ms. Robinson covered, um, everything that I would have said. The only other thing that I just think is of interest, since we all sat here at the table tonight, is when I did a quick tally of the number of rezoning or plan amendments that we did, just in the five plan amendments that are going through public hearing, there were over, um, close to 300 students that'll be affected in those developments. So, everything that we're doing now that we're talking about resale is also going to be impacted by those potential new citizens shit all those rezonings, and that's just what we did tonight, was 300 kids. So, this area is, is growing insurmountably, plus we have all the resale items as well.
And unless there's strong objection, I would like to invite Mr. Fletcher forward and hear his comments, uh, about the caps and why they did it, and what would be the consequences of removing them or, or changing their policy and that type of thing, if that's okay with you.
And I'd also like to know if any other municipalities have expressed these kinds of concerns at this point, or what they're hearing about it, because surely we're not the only ones. Maybe we're the first ones to take, you know, an active step, but...
Mr. Fletcher, once again, thank you for sitting through such a long meeting.
Well, it was fascinating. Not being a graduate of Cary High School, I wish I had been. So, I have, I have brought with me, uh, two reports tonight. Um, I can't break it out by only West Wake or Cary. This is a county-wide report, there are two of them. One of them shows us, as of today, all of the students that we, that are registered in the Wake County Public Schools within the base of each of our schools, and where those children are. Have they gone to Magnet School? Are they attending the base school? Have they opted for the calendar option? Have they been capped out of their base school? So, that's one report, and it'd be very informative for you. There are 10 copies, I believe. The second report is a similar, it's the same format, but it shows what students are in the school, which can include students that are not in the base. We had previous assignment plans where students moved into schools where they weren't in the base, they've been grandfathered in, they weren't moved back out, things like that. So, this second report, so we can deal with, with the facts. I've tried to figure out how to explain capping and its benefit, and I came up with a, three little graphics here. In a, in a school that's standard open enrollment, we've got an influx of students represented by the green. Anybody moves into the base assignment area?
No.
Comes into the school, we're glad to have you. If we're starting to get tight on space, we're going to make room for you. Sure. If a school gets to be overcrowded, and it's to the point where safety becomes an issue, where bathrooms are overloaded, where cafeteria space and media center space typically is are the driving, those are the three controlling factors of the central building, then we go to the point of putting a cap on the building at a maximum number of enrollment. And we put a cap on the building, the attendance starts to look like this, or the, the new starts to look like this, or the new influx. We still have a few new kids that could get into the building, primarily the entering grades, kindergarten, sixth grade, things like that. Could be children who are in other schools whose base assignment is in the capped base, and they want to move back. They might have been in year-round. They want to move back to traditional. So, our current standard is that it's, that those decisions primarily are based on residency date, when was a domicile established within the base. So, that gives us a fairly strong control that we're not going to add another 100 kids a year into this building. That would be unsafe. The suggestion has been that we might consider using the date of construction instead. And when I look at that, the date of construction, and there are 12 squares here figuring that maybe 8% of the student population would be coming from new construction. That's just an out-of-the-air kind of number. But this more closely reflects an uncapped school, because 90% or 92% of the homes in the community could be bought, children still enroll in the school, which would, so this model would not give us the control that the current model of capping by date of residency provides. Now, why do we have to cap it all? Because we have an inadequate number of schools. And that's a county-wide issue. It's a county funding issue. I appreciate the council members who were at the Cary Planning Retreat yesterday, when I made my full presentation about just how big that gap is between where we are and where we need to go. And that's the information about capping. And the school board believes it's an appropriate strategy. It is a last, it is a preferred strategy to then, compared to carving up a school community and saying, these three neighborhoods are going to have to move on a short-term basis, particularly when we don't have new construction, we don't have school capacity close by. Pardon me, I'm getting a frog in my throat. So, the alternatives to capping is what we're used to as assignment, which is to circle a part of the community that's currently attending the capped school, and to say, we're going to move you to a school elsewhere. That's not stable for this school community either. So, it's a, thank you very much. It's not a strategy we choose to use. It is a strategy that's available to us. It has been effective in slowing down the influx of kids into a particular building and maintaining a safe and wholesome instructional environment for the kids that are in that school. It's interesting. I'm also a real estate agent. I took the opportunity to pull some data today, very broad data, for the last 12 months in the Mills Park area. Mills Park Elementary School has been capped the longest of any schools here, capped in December of 2012. I just pulled sales data for the last 12 months, and over the last 12 months, an average of 18 homes that claim to have Mills Park as the base were sold. There are currently 45 under contract, which would be an average of 22 homes per month, are currently selling. And there are only 47 homes on the market, which is basically less than two months of inventory, which is a very strong seller's market. For Austin Ridge, the other school, this school was capped in March of this year. So, the last four months, there have been 129 closed sales. That's about 30-plus homes a month. There are currently 56 under contract that should close in the next 60 days. And there are 51 homes that somebody might be able to go and look at that are still active listings. So, it's hard to see how the macro-market has been adversely affected by the cap. What has been positively affected is the environment within the school building, and the safety and the quality of the programming that we're able to offer by having a stable population within the building.
So, can I ask, and I'm trying desperately to understand, so by capping it the way you're capping it now, if someone moves out and someone moves in, regardless of, well, some may have children, some may have more or less children, but you're guaranteed at the capped schools not to increase student population, period, with this system?
Currently, by date of residency, would establish who goes to that building. Now, a student, a family that moves into the neighborhood, and they have children, for each of those children, there's an option of two overflow schools. So, one would be a calendar that's the same as the school that's been capped. The other would be the opposite calendar, typically traditional or year-round.
So, I want to see if I can finish my thought.
Okay.
Simple logic would tell me that, on average, people moving out, people moving in, you'd get the same number of students, but that's not what you're seeing. Is that a correct statement?
The, the, I don't know how to answer that.
Okay.
Without, what we, the reason we have the cap is the combination of new construction and folks moving into existing housing. And I have no way to tease that out.
Okay.
So, the county doesn't keep any kind of record of how many students come that would normally go to that base school and then are given the choice of the two other alternate schools?
We do have that, and I just shared that with you in that report.
Okay, so that's in here. Was that on the first, the first?
On the base, there are two reports. A school report, which shows the students that are in the building, and then the base report.
Is that the second report?
The title is on the top-left corner of the report. You have a school population report and a base population report. If you look at the base population report for Austin Ridge, for example, it says there are 951 students attending the base. There are 662 in the base that are not attending Austin Ridge. And where have they gone? 60 of them have gone to magnet schools. 148 were grandfathered at other schools. Actually, 157 were grandfathered to other schools. 307 opted for a traditional calendar school by choice. 110 applied for a transfer to another school for some reason. There are three students who've been capped out of Austin Ridge at the moment, based on this report, which was pulled today.
Okay.
Okay? The Mills Park numbers are larger. The Mills Park numbers on page...
You have 96, yeah.
Top of page four, shows 96 students have been capped out, or still capped out.
For this current school year?
This is current, this is as of today.
Yes, but I mean, is it since the school was originally capped, or is it just for this calendar year?
This is as of today.
I understand that.
I don't have an accumulative number...
Is it for students who would normally be attending there starting in August? Or, like, 96 students that would normally want to attend there in August, or is it 96 students that have been capped out since the, the school became capped?
Since March, yeah.
I can't answer that from this data. I can tell you that for children that are elementary-aged and live in the base of Mills Park, currently there are 96 who have been capped out to one of the overflow schools. They might have been in the base for a week. They might have been in the base since January of 2013. I can't tell from this report. All right, now, it's typical that in the summer, when people move, people come and go, ebb and flow with natural occurrence of life, some seats can open up, and students in overflow schools can be invited back. And so, this number is likely to go down between now and August. And after the school comes in in August 25, it'll start inching back up as we go through the year.
I guess the question, and maybe my simplistic understanding of the process will be revealed by this question, but it seems with the sophistication of database applications now that we could look at every child who is capped out and take their address and cross-reference that against children that have left the school because they've moved from a house. Let's just say it's 100 Chantel Lane, and two students are capped out because they can't, they just moved into 100 Chantel Lane. And then, we cross-reference it and say, oh, we lost two students because they left 100 Chantel Lane. And you could look at the net difference between those who left and those who came to see how effective capping is on the number. Because I think, to me, I can't tell how effective it really, it really is, because I don't, what it doesn't include is how many kids have left the school because they've moved away and vacated a house that new students moved into and then were capped out. So, that's where my confusion lies. And I guess the question that citizens have raised to me is, does the consternation that capping create, does it, is it outweighed by the benefit and the gains? And people just want us to understand the data.
The stability of the student population, here's what happens in a, in a school that's maxed out in terms of what it can handle when you have 20 more students come in. Then every classroom is overloaded. There's not money to bring a teacher in mid-year. There's not another room for that teacher to operate in mid-year. So, the, at some point, the system draws a line and says, this is the maximum number of children we can safely educate in this building, including the trailers, including the conversion of the band room to a teaching space, et cetera, et cetera. And then, that's the number. The benefit to the community is that it, we're avoiding an assignment that typically would wind up being a domino out of Mills Park to another school. That southern school may be overcrowded as well, out of that school to a school farther toward Raleigh. So, the capping seems to be the lesser of two evils when it comes to trying to manage growth and maintain a safe environment for our children.
Mr. Fletcher, is there staff available so that maybe, and I don't know if Ms. Robinson wants to do this, so that she could sit down and get these detailed answers?
Oh, we can, we can make that, we can make that meeting possible. And I'm not sure we're going to have the data tools or the time to dig down to the detail level that she's asking for, but we can certainly have the meeting and perhaps more clearly. Staff certainly knows what's available from a data standpoint and data analysis standpoint better than I do.
And I'm thinking, Ms. Robinson, that if you could come back with details, then you could tell us all what you found out.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I think it's always good to have open communication between the different boards. I think that even if it's just greater understanding of the capping process that comes out of this and no change, we're better for it for having had the open communication. So, I would really look forward to having that meeting.
Yeah, we can make that happen.
Very good. Thank you.
And I was kind of struck by, part of the difference is how you would define effectiveness, Jennifer, at this point, given your perspective and perhaps these parents, is very different from how Mr. Fletcher and the school board is defining effectiveness, which is try not to overwhelm the facility and therefore the teachers and the staff.
Right.
Two very different measures of effectiveness based on the problem...
If we've got 900 children in the building, and we're organized to teach those and to nurture those and to help them reach a year's worth of growth or more during that year, a constant influx of additional students throughout the year without additional teaching resources or spaces is very problematic.
And it's easy...
In our design, we would all, we would typically have three students per classroom less than the max.
And that never happens, does it?
And that has not happened in Western Wake County in at least 10 years.
Yeah. I was going to say, and it's easier, not easy, but easier, to measure the impact of what you're feeling, because you can do it with numbers, which you're trying to measure feelings to.
I think we all are.
I'm very empathetic to that. I mean, as a practicing realtor too, I just, I'm very empathetic to that challenge. What I will say to you is that every school in Western Wake County is a great school that I'd be happy to send my children to.
Of course.
It may not be the most proximate to my home.
Oh, I don't think proximity...
But the children are going to get a good education at whatever school is available, has a seat available for them when they come to our community.
Right. I think, I don't think it's a matter of proximity for families. I think it's a matter of knowing that their children will attend a school with their neighbors so that they have that feeling of stability. And Mr. Fletcher and I talked at length yesterday, and one of their tenets that they really work towards is stability, but stability is defined many different ways. Stability of a school versus stability of a neighborhood or a child's life. I mean, it's all, stability is a many-faceted aspect.
As you look at the report, and you see that all the children in the base school report that are not attending that school, the vast majority of them, Austin Ridge, there are three who are not attending Austin Ridge because we've sent them to an overflow school. The other 600 that are not in Austin Ridge have made choices to go elsewhere. As part of our reasonably open choice opportunity, we try to accommodate as many transfers as we can. So, the stability of the neighborhood comes into question, too. If this person's in a magnet school, this person's going to a year-round school, this person's going to a traditional school, for which we're providing transportation, by the way. And so, neighbor, just because two neighbors are in the same base doesn't mean their families would choose to go to the same school.
That's a fair point.
So...
Well, I look forward to meeting with you and your staff.
All right, we'll get together and schedule that.
And we really appreciate you staying this late hour and answering these questions for us.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to do that, and I look forward to continuing to improve our communication.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you for carrying this forward. We have another initiated request for mass grading. Ms. Robinson?
Yeah, sorry, I brought three, so I apologize in advance. Okay, the, this one is co-sponsored by Mr. Yerha, and thank you, Mr. Yerha, for supporting this. The next two items, this one and the one after this, has to do with concerns that we've had articulated to us by our citizens, and also concerns that we've expressed back and forth among each other as we look at what's happening with the development standards that we have. So, it might be most simple for me to read what I proposed in my, for those who are watching. Our grading ordinance, which is 7.4.3G, was designed to discourage mass grading. And we did that in conjunction with the tree preservation task force many years ago, because we saw developers coming in and just taking, leveling everything, taking away the topography and just flattening it. And then, we had a very sterile-looking community where we used to have some, you know, pretty nice-looking communities, or land. The intent was to require developers to grade selectively for infrastructure and then on a lot-by-lot basis so that trees and topography of the land were protected. Unfortunately, some developers are pulling all of the grading permits for all of the lots at one time so that mass grading can occur. So, we had not anticipated that a developer would do that, because the way that our, the limits on single-family lot grading is written, it says, "Grading and erosion control plans submitted as part of a site subdivision plan associated with residential development that has a gross density of three units per acre or less," that would be our low-density category, "are limited to clearing and disturbing only the land area required to install the infrastructure to serve the development, such as sewer and water lines, roads, stormwater devices, greenways, and similar infrastructure. Until a building permit is issued for a lot, each lot must remain undisturbed, with the exception of portions of a lot impacted by the installation of infrastructure." So, as you can imagine, we were trying to have these larger lots keep their trees and keep their slope, and then they'd just take out for the footprint of the house itself. Exceptions to grade upon, excuse me, exceptions to grade upon a lot prior to the issuance of a building permit may be granted as modification to the original plan approved by the Director of Engineering if there are sufficient justification, such as problematic drainage issues or severe topographical issues. So, if the slope is so steep you can't build a house on it, you know, that would be an exception. So, the practice of getting, pulling your permits for all of the lots at one time is permitted by our current ordinance. And what I'm asking the council to consider is discussing changes to our ordinance to more effectively discourage mass grading. And I don't have any particular ideas, but I know our staff has some ideas of a way to address this. So, if others thought that this was something that was worth pursuing, we would direct staff to look at the way our current ordinance is written and make some tweaks to it to help it achieve what our intent was.
Okay. Mr. Yerha, co-sponsor?
Yeah, I think this is really a wording issue more than a philosophy or anything. It was aimed to discourage and limit mass grading. I don't think this council has any, wants any changes to that. I think we still want to discourage and limit mass grading. I really think it's a wording issue that if staff looked at this, they could kind of figure out a better way to say it, because, you know, if I were developing land, I would do the same thing as what's happening now, I mean, based on this ordinance. So, I think there's a way we can just change the wording on this one.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to investigate our mass grading ordinance, which I believe, I took it off my screen, I think it's 7.4.3G, and... ordinance, which I believe, I took it off my screen, I think it's 7.4.3G, and bring back proposals for modifications to help us achieve its intent.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
All right, one more.
Thank you, all right. This next item pertains to an issue that we have been grappling with a lot at this table. Our citizens, when they look at a land use plan map and it says two units per acre, they perceive that they would have lots adjacent to them that is, that are about 20,000 square feet. However, the way that our ordinance is written, it says that it's your growth, based on growth density. So if the developer were to take out all of the land that's undevelopable or is parks or is buffer space, then he still can have the two units per acre on average, but he can condense that down to a smaller space. And consequently, we get proposals where we have very small yards, like 6,000 square feet. And there's two problems with this. One, I think that it makes it very confusing for citizens. But I also think that when we retract or recoil at a proposal by a developer who believes that he is following our land use plan, we find ourselves in a, being, creating an unpredictable, unpredictable environment for the developer. And so I think the way that we might be able to solve this, and I'm, I'm not saying we have to do it this particular way, but maybe our staff could help us figure this out, is to consider having language on our land use plan that might say something like, two units per acre with lots no smaller than X many square feet, or something like that. But because this is such a complex matter, I thought it might be best for, and our staff agreed, that we meet in a work session to discuss it and really delve into this matter so that as our, imagine Cary group goes forward working on our land use plan, they would have good direction on how we want to address this issue.
Okay, Ms. Yerha.
No, you said that very well, Mrs. Robinson, and, and I think the staff may come up with, maybe minimum lot sizes is the way to go. There may be some other options. And it would be nice if there were some other options, that we could hear those options at a work session, not just have a work session and us say, I think this is what we think, but have those options actually presented to us at a work session, if there are other options.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, I think staff has the overall gist of what we're trying to do here. Yeah, let's definitely have them look at it and do some stuff before we have that work session.
Yeah, well, I think, sorry.
And the only thing I'd add is that not only would it be more clear to the developer and not be misleading to someone who believes they're meeting the letter of the ordinance, but it would also be more clear and helpful to citizens who believe they're interpreting it right based on just the understanding of English. And then they, they can't understand why they're getting these 6,000 square foot lots. And that's, and hence the protest petition process and all the angst that comes with these rezonings. I think it's a great idea.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's all, it's all a great idea, and I think we need to move forward. You know, when you do talk to some of the development community, and you, you hit on it, you know, they think they're complying. And we have so many caveats, and then when you overlay them in, it, as, as you said, Gail, it confuses the citizens. But, you know, I think, you know, before the staff just kind of goes off on its own and, and tries to deal with what we're trying to address, is, you know, several at the planning conference have some pretty creative ideas that meet our intent, but also provide predictability as they do their performers. And that, that same intent would actually help citizens. So, you know, you know, part of what the staff should be doing, I think, is maybe reaching out to, to that community and letting them know that, you know, we want to fix this problem and get their feedback on it somewhat. Because some of them were explaining some ideas of which I will do no justice to try to share them now, but they had to do with some percents. And it just made, you know, it sounded, there may be a lot of yeah-buts, but it sounded pretty practical and it would still achieve our goals. So I'm, I'm just saying, I think there's a, a community of local responsible developers that want to see Cary succeed. You know, a lot of what we deal with are the, the national chains. And let's just make sure you're reaching out to them and, and getting some of their, their feedback.
Motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we direct staff to come to us with some solutions in a work session after having worked with our development community to get their ideas as well about how we can address the issue of the confusion over our land use plan and its square-footage.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. We now move into closed session. I would entertain a motion.
Pursuant to General Statute 143-318 dot 11A, 1 and 3, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town. Among other things, the council expects to receive advice concerning the following lawsuit, S.J. Lewis Construction, Inc. versus the Town of Cary. And number two, to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by General Statute 143-318 dot 10E.
There's a motion.
A second.
And a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we are in session.